Okay, please come to order, we're going to go back into session. We're going to start with Article 32. Article 32 is on page 53 of the warrant. This, as I had said before the break, received a move not to adopt recommendation from the Finance Committee. Mr. Williams, the proponent of the article, has called it for consideration, and he has presented us with this motion that's on the screen. Move to raise and appropriate $150,000 to be spent by the town manager with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to pay for the removal, disposal, and reimbursement of costs associated with the structure moved from 4 Monomoy Road to 13 Somerset Road in 2012. Is that your motion, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Go ahead, Mr. Williams, and then I'm going to go to Town Council.
All right. For those of you who don't know me, Clifford Williams, Finance Committee, I'm not speaking for the Finance Committee. I got involved in town government probably seven years ago because I was disgusted with the way things were run at the airport. I was alone for a long time with that argument until a few of the members of this committee formed a subcommittee. We investigated the airport, and then the wheels seemed to come off finally. I was hoping we had learned something from that, but after dealing with the move of a house, a structure, which I hope we can show the picture of it, in the last three years...
Mr. Williams, you're speaking as a private citizen at this point, not as a member of the Finance Committee.
Yes, not as a Finance Committee member, right, absolutely.
Okay. You know, could you do me a favor? Could you walk around and speak from the front of the table as opposed to at the table? I'm just, I don't want to give the impression that you're speaking on behalf of the Finance Thank you very much. Go ahead.
This structure came from 4 Monomoy Road. It's, I think they paid about four or five million dollars for the property, and they advertised in the paper in 2012 to move the structure. I took that and filled out the applications through the guidance of the building department, moved the structure in 2012. It's now been three years, two lawyers, two engineers, and tens of thousands of dollars, and still have no building permit. I brought this to Town Meeting because I'm looking for a voice, a reason, to find out why this could go on, still in this town, and like I made mention to the situation at the airport. I'm looking, I'm seeking to remove the structure from the property, and trying to redeem the about $150,000 in cost to get rid of the structure and dispose of it. If you, I guess like me, if you are appalled by a situation like this and not happy with the fact that a town of this size with the administration, the Board of Selectmen, we can't resolve this matter, and the fact that I'm actually here, I think reflects the fact that there's a serious problem. This is a million and a half dollar structure, or was, and now it's got to be removed. It's crazy to think that we couldn't resolve this. I've asked to resolve this before we got here, and no attempts been made. And so I ask for your consideration to vote yes on this article and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Giorgio?
Moderator. When I first reviewed this petitioned article and when I met with the Finance Committee, I advised the Finance Committee at that time that, in my opinion, this is not a lawful appropriation of town funds. There has been, this article essentially would provide $150,000 to reimburse a private individual for alleged costs that have been incurred. There has been no lawsuit filed against the town, there's been no settlement, there's been no acknowledgement by the town of any liability, there's been no release executed to make sure that if this money were paid, any claims associated with the moving of this house could not be brought against the town. So therefore, it's essentially just giving money away to a private party who claims to have been damaged. And based upon the anti-aid amendment of the Constitution, in my opinion, this would not be a lawful appropriation of town funds. One other point, Madam Moderator. The funding source for this is raise and appropriate, and I've been, I've spoken to the Finance Director. The town is very, very close to its levy limit, and as you know, you cannot raise and appropriate money above your levy limit, and so if this were to pass, and somehow a determination was, you know, some kind of a settlement was reached, it's doubtful whether there's room within the levy limit without doing a lot of financial maneuvering to be able to put this on the recap sheet for fiscal 2017.
Thank you. So anything further on this motion? Oh, yes. Ms. Zoda?
So the struc, the structure's been moved from 4 Monomoy Road to Somerset Road. Correct, right? And now they want to take it down?
I actually don't know. Mr. Williams, can you give some clarification?
A building permit was never issued once the structure was moved. So they advertised that a structure could be moved, I moved it. I'm trying to make a long story short, this could turn into a public hearing, and then I was never given a building permit.
So where's the structure now?
13 Somerset Road.
Okay.
The neighbors don't like it.
Okay. And, and yes, we want to take it down?
It's never put up. It's just there in pieces.
Is it a whole structure, or is it a structure in pieces?
Well, it's a structure in pieces. It was moved.
Okay. So the structure was moved from Monomoy to Somerset. It's currently in pieces, and there's no building permit for it.
I guess the question is, why isn't there a building permit for it?
Okay.
That's a good question. Does it take three years to get a building permit, you think?
Well, who would answer that question? You apply for a building permit, you pay money, you get a building permit, you wait, I don't know.
Ms. Snell, or Mr. Giorgio, whoever wants to talk about this first?
So Madam Moderator, I don't want to get into a lot of detail on Town Meeting floor because the town actually at one point did receive a demand from an attorney representing Mr. Williams, so I'm not sure what's going to be coming in the future with regard to any claims here. But my understanding is that the building permit was denied, and it was appealed to the state, and the state upheld the denial of the building permit by the local inspector.
Mr. Williams?
Just trying to make, try not to make this a public hearing. Through the guidance of the building department, which has a lot of great employees, I applied to build the house. It took months to do, it took years to do, and then they denied their own permit. It's insanity. I did go to that board in Boston, which after the meeting, the chairman came up and apologized to me. They didn't deny the building permit, but at that point, they felt they needed now, at this point, another engineer to come in and look at the project. If that was the case, that they needed this engineer, then that should have been done at the beginning of the project, not three years later. So it's been denied, deferred, deflected, been misguided, misled, and we have a million and a half dollar structure that's now junk. And someone needs to be held accountable. Hopefully, however this vote goes, just like the airport, there's been a reference to the subcommittee, making a subcommittee from the Finance Committee to do an investigation, and I believe if that is done, the same result will happen as did at the airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. DeCosta?
I'm sorry, but I don't think this is the place to be discussing something like this. This is border on, on Mr. Williams accusing town employees of doing things illegally or improperly. This isn't the place that you debate this. If he's got an issue with what happened, he should take the town to court, not Town Meeting. Let's move the question and get on with this.
Okay. Let's go to a vote then on the motion on Article 32. Mr. Williams' motion is as printed on the screen. A yes vote would adopt that motion, a no vote will defeat the motion. It just requires a majority vote to pass. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That motion is not adopted. Article 38 starts our discussion of zoning, and before we, before we dive right into zoning, I did want to recognize the Chairman of the Planning Board, Mr. Rector, for the purpose of making just a few introductory remarks.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, for a point of privilege. I do appreciate it. Now, this one's a little tough at this point, but thank God for television and being able to recreate things later. One thing that's happening to our planning board is one of our longtime members, Mr. John McLaughlin. This is technically his last meeting for being on the planning board and also on the Planning Commission. John has faithfully served those two boards for the better part of almost 20 years' worth of time. Mind you though, he's still running strong at this point because, if you've noticed, he is on the ballot for the HDC, and I think the HDC now would chalk him in at just about 46 years, if memory is fair, yeah, 46, 47 years. Anyways though, I just, unfortunately, he's not here at the moment, you know, and the funny part is, John was always in the back of the auditorium, and here was one of my first chances, maybe, to get him up front. Well, rabbit got away again. Anyways, I just wanted to say, as one member of the board, and hopefully the audience will do me a favor, and please put their hands together for him because 20 years is no short. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Director.
Thank you.
So Article 38, which starts on page 71 of the warrant, continues to page 72, did not get a favorable recommendation from the planning board. The motion is moved to take no action. However, Samantha Parsons has called this article and has presented a positive motion, which is on the screen. It's moved that the zoning map of the town of Nantucket be amended by placing the following properties currently located in commercial, trade, entrepreneurship, and craft, C-Tech District in the residential 10, R10 District, and then there's a list of seven properties on Marble Way. Is that your motion, Ms. Parsons? Okay, is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Ms. Parsons, if you want to stand up, they'll give you a microphone, and we can...
Can you hear me?
Yes. When you hold it like, kind of slanted and kind of close to your mouth.
Like that?
Yes.
My name is Sam Parsons. I live on Marble Way, and as I know time is limited, I'm speaking on behalf of the 20-plus neighbors in the Marble Way, Sleepy Hollow, Somerset Road neighborhood, some who are here today and some who are either working or off island for personal reasons and could not be here. This is just a brief four-minute summary regarding the past eight months on our street, Marble Way. We hope it'll shed some light on why we are here and the reason we have filed a citizens' article to change the zoning on our street from C-Tech Commercial to R10 Residential. Since the early '70s, the even side of Marble Way has remained exactly the same as it is today. Every cottage and house that exists on that side of the street was built in the '70s and really hasn't changed much. Half the homeowners on that side of the street run very low-impact landscaping businesses out of their homes, and the other half are private homes. So up until last summer, few of the year-round residents on the opposite side of Marble Way, i.e. us, even realized there was commercial zoning on that side of the street. There are no large buildings or any real evidence of commercial activity. Last summer, everything changed. The owner of 6 Marble Way subdivided his lot into two separate lots, demoed the house that existed there, and sold both lots to two locals who each planned to build massive 90-plus-foot-long commercial buildings on what used to be one lot with a house on. We were mortified as the realization of what was possible on our street came to light. As a neighborhood, 20-plus of us attended every HDC and Planning Board meeting and fought to prevent the first 90-foot building from being approved. We knew that once one was approved, the floodgates opened for seven potential warehouses going up in the future. Sadly, the HDC did eventually approve the building despite there not being one other building anywhere close in size or scale on or abutting Marble Way. The HDC is typically so very strict with what they approve. If something isn't fitting within a neighborhood, be it too tall, trim color being the same, they deny, 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 but for some reason, our neighborhood didn't seem to get the same consideration. Why would a monstrous building be approved if no other building this size exists on our street? Why not make it smaller? Why not approve two 45-foot buildings? Why not make this building look like all the other houses on or abutting Marble Way? So as a neighborhood, we appeal the HD's decision. Fast forward almost eight months of multiple Planning Board and HDC meetings, the current owner of one of the lots that was approved is now selling his lot to someone else who plans to build a 55-foot-long building that will look like it belongs on our street, which is all we wanted from the start. Almost every resident on Marble Way lives here year-round. Many walk their dogs on the street, many have kids who've learned to ride their bikes on the street, and the effect of commercial vehicles coming and going every day has brought the neighborhood together to fight further 90-foot-long buildings from being built on our street, creating high-impact use of our road and changing our neighborhood forever. We were encouraged by a member of both the HDC and the Planning Board to change the zoning on Marble Way, as in her words, "There is a huge zoning era on your street." So we have filed this warrant article to change the commercial zoning on our street to residential and are fighting to save the future of our street. The current businesses on our street, the current commercial businesses on our street are grandfathered for their commercial use, but this zoning change will protect future 90-foot-long buildings going up where they don't belong. The Planning Board are not in flavor, in favor of this zoning change as they do not want to create non-conforming lots. However, our argument is that the approval of a 90-foot-long building on a street and in a neighborhood where nothing even close to that size exists has set a precedent for the possibility of many non-conforming lots in the future if the zoning does not change to residential. Please vote yes for changing the zoning on Marble Way from C-Tech to R10. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. On the motion, Ms. Snell?
Before I speak on this article, I would like to thank the audience for all of your support today with the Planning Board-sponsored articles. The Planning Board appreciates your support on those. A lot of the comments that were mentioned by the previous speaker deal with specific HDC issues, the length of the building, the style of the building. Those are HDC-related, they're not planning-related, and they're not zoning-related. The proposed zoning change will not have any effect on those concerns that she expressed. The property owners in the C-Tech District have already taken steps to protect their commercial options, and they have secured permits and plans that are in place. A lot of those permits were reviewed by the Planning Board, and there were significant conditions put on those permits to mitigate the concerns of the neighbors and to attempt to protect the neighborhood. The non-conformities that will be created by this zoning change are not a good planning practice, and that's not something that the Planning Board encourages or supports. Town Meeting voted in 2012 to reduce the density and commercial potential of this area by rezoning it from RC2, which is the least restrictive zoning district, in Nantucket. It's been identified in the master plan to be phased out. It allows everything from a residential, single-family dwelling to an asphalt plant, and that is what was on that side of Marble Way until 2012, when it was placed in the C-Tech District, which dramatically reduced the density potential and dramatically reduced the commercial uses that could be allowed. Please support the decision made by Town Meeting in 2012 to retain limited commercial potential in this area. Please support the Planning Board's motion, and please defeat this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, first, Mr. Kodelak, is it? If you could stand up, they'll get you the microphone.
I agree with the lady who just spoke, mostly in that most of what Ms. Parsons says was incorrect. I own some of the commercial property that's being proposed to change. I bought it several years ago, actually before these houses were there, and I bought it because it was commercial property. And then a few years back, like she just said, in 2012, the Planning Board approached us with this commercial property, and we severely reduced the impact of this by changing it from RC2 to C-Tech. We agreed with this because it was in the, you know, best interest of all. I think that, you know, there's a total disregard by this article for us who own commercial property. I mean, we bought it for commercial property, and now, just like that, you want to change it? I just see this, you know, this self-interest group that's very small with a total disregard for the commercial land that obviously the island needs. And on those 20 people that did sign this article, the majority of them don't even live there. They live nowhere near Marble Way, they work in Ms. Parsons' real estate office.
Let's move away from that.
Okay, fine. But again, the Planning Board and Finance Committee doesn't want this article. I think most people benefit it, wouldn't want it. And I guess, just in general, I guess if you, I mean, you have to know when you buy a home near commercial property that was already there, I mean, if you don't want to live next to commercial property, why buy commercial property? And I think if you want any harmony in this neighborhood, like you're saying, this is the wrong approach, so I hope you vote no on this.
Thank you. Yes, up in the back?
My name is Lindsay Curry, and my husband and I live at 11 Marble Way and run our gardening and landscaping business at 16 Marble Way. When we designed and built our shop, we carefully considered the fact that our commercial lot abuts a quiet residential community, as did our neighbors at 12 and 2 Marble Way, who have very similar businesses. Last year, the property at 6 Marble Way was approved for a massive 90-foot commercial building. That was intended to house multiple businesses on a very small lot. Nothing in this commercial district has never approached the size and scale of that project. As much as we appreciate that we were able to create appropriate and properly scaled shop space in the C-Tech zone, we were deeply concerned about the impact that large-scale developments and the resulting increased traffic on Marble Way, as well as Bartlett, will have on the safety of our children in our neighborhood. Since it appears that the Planning Board and the HDC cannot limit the scale of these developments, we strongly favor the change of zoning from C-Tech to residential.
Mr. Lowell?
This is, we left the, we're going from poop to dirt at Town Meeting, which we all knew that was going to happen. RC2, as Mr. Kodelak discussed and Leslie so eloquently explained, basically allows anything to be built pretty much anywhere if you're in RC2. Restaurants, bars, gas stations, asphalt plants, anything. This road, Bartlett Road, was part of the '72 agreement to, with the property owners that all owned out there, we all know who those people were, they didn't want anything to happen. So RC2 was the perfect zoning district for everything to stay the same as it was before '72. The houses on Marble Way, on the right-hand side, all got built around 10 years ago. This has been there, this is like an airport, it already was commercial. As a planning board, we can't, we don't want to get rid of commercial everywhere. We've already done that a lot. This area had been set up as a lot of light commercial, so this district is what we kind of call light commercial compared to what could have been done. The other thing I want people to understand is Marble Way is a 60-foot layout to separate the residential from the commercial, plus the buffers, so you're talking about 100 feet of distance. And somewhere, there always has to be a separation. Somebody is going to live next to a change, okay? There is, there are people in this room that live next to a zoning change. Somebody has to be in a butter to something, okay? We all can't just have no zoning or all the same zoning district. So I urge you to defeat this. This will create a lot of confusion in the future with appeals for variances, perimeter plans, et cetera, et cetera. This is not what we're about at Planning Board, especially in the last 10 years, where we've tried to get zoning to conform with existing uses. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. On the motion. This requires a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion, a no vote will defeat it. The motion is the motion made by Ms. Parsons, is shown on the screen. Seeing no hands, we'll go right to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
That motion is not adopted. That takes us to Article 48. Article 48 starts on page 90. The recommendation of the Planning Board appears on page 91. It did receive a positive motion. That motion is as printed in the warrant, and I'll ask for your unanimous consent to waive the reading, and I'll recognize Chair Barry Rector for the purpose of making the Planning Board's motion.
So move back one minute.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. This was called by Mr. Collier, so unless the Planning Board wants to... Okay, we'll go right to you, Mr. Collier.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Cormac Collier, Nantucket Land Council. Before I explain my reasons for calling this article, I just would like to thank Chairman Rector, the rest of the Planning Board, and Andrew Vorse for the work that they did on the zoning articles this year and the review that you did. I did, as we have, as we have stated in our recommendation sheet, had a couple of concerns about a few of the articles, but a number of them were, either we gave no opinion or we felt that they were very good, so I thank you for that. This article, I think the best way to explain why I called is if I could put up a map of the article. Thank you. A number of properties along Evergreen and Daffodil, one on Daffodil and then two on Miller Lane out by the airport, are being proposed by a citizen, Mr. Lyman, to change from two-acre zoning to essentially one-acre zoning. I felt that any time Town Meeting is asked to vote on this type of zoning change, which increases the subdivision potential and the development potential of a certain area, that it really is important to not just brush by it, but to get a sense of the... that it really is important to not just brush by it, but to get a sense of the meeting, see where the discussion goes, and have the Town Meeting make its decisions. First and foremost, there's some environmental concerns of this area. It is located in the Wellhead Recharge District. Just based upon principle alone, areas in that district, unless they are sewored, should not be proposed for additional subdivision. You're going to have additional septics, additional heavy use of septics, and additional leaching into our groundwater. And then from a planning perspective, and I do sympathize with Mr. Lyden because, as we know from last year, the past-in property was re-subdivided. Mr. Lyden is, if I can speak for you, he's one of the properties that abuts that R5 zone. And I do sympathize because he was put in a various, he was put into a somewhat precarious position in terms of trying to preserve his lug too, and now he has R5 against him. However, from a planning perspective, I really would like to see how all these 10 lots, I would like to see how the past-in property gets developed, gets molded and used in coordination with the surrounding neighborhoods, the traffic, the noise, everything else with that type of development, before we go ahead and change additional areas for rezoning. Just from a planning perspective, it's where I come out in a disagreement with our Planning Board. And then also, each and every one of these landowners, and this is where I put on my ironic hat of being an affordable housing proponent, each and every one of these lots can utilize the secondary lot provision in our bylaw. They can subdivide under existing zoning standards, shorter than, smaller than two acres, as long as one of those lots has an affordable covenant on it. And by changing the zoning, you're essentially de-incentivizing people to do that. I think we should exhaust all measures for affordable housing, particularly in this climate, until we change zoning that will essentially create market rate development. And what does that market rate development do in terms of affordable housing? Well, it increases our market rate numbers. We need to eliminate 40Bs, the potential 40Bs on this island, is to get to a 10% affordable housing number. Every time we increase that market rate number, we're playing catch-up. And I just think at this point of the, again, in this point in time in our island, particularly what's going down on 106 Surfside Road, which I'm intimately involved with, the 40B proposed there, I just don't think the town should be promoting our inability to reach that 10% number. And then finally, Mr. Lyden, last year did bring up that his son did not qualify for the Affordable Housing Program, and that he made too much money, so he couldn't subdivide and then give his lot, give that lot to his son. Myself and Mr. Fredericks created an article, which actually was already approved, Article 55 of this year's Town Meeting, that allows a homeowner to divide their land under the secondary lot provision. But if there's a qualified family member, such as a son, it doesn't have to be put into affordable housing covenant. We're doing our best here to try to promote affordable housing, which is necessary, and then also maintain a balance of equality of life and decrease all of those impacts that the growth causes on this island. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and also, suffice to say, I hope that you vote this down.
Thank you. Mr. Vorse?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And Cormac, thank you for your words. I thank you too for some of your help in the affordable housing arena. I think with your support, we're going to make some progress in that arena. On this particular article, and I want to take a little responsibility for last year, some of these articles were merged together in a big article for efficiency's sake, and I think that made it seem scarier, and, you know, it made individual property owners not be able to really make their case for the articles. So in this case, just looking at this one area and then the other two that have been called, I think the, I want to address some of what Cormac raised. Number one, these lots all do have direct sewer access. So one of the claims last year is that certain lots that were proposed, these other lots here on Evergreen do not have direct access, so they have been removed from the sewer district, and they're no longer eligible. Secondly, I think it's important to, there is decisions of fairness that need to make their way into land use decisions. And basically, these properties do abut higher density. A concept that has been brought up many times is transitional zoning, and the area to the north of these is basically R2, Commercial District here, and R5, and other commercial districts, which directly abut these. So here, the property owners are saying, okay, we have density that's four, six times what we have, and all we're talking about is moving these lots from two acre to one acre. So this is not a huge density. These are still big lots. One-acre density is found in Monomoy, in Quidnet, in all kinds of other neighborhoods. So also, I don't think that this factors out or removes the ability to do covenants. In a way, it doubles the ability. So a property owner can create twice as many covenants if they choose to. A covenant lot is a voluntary provision, not a coercive one. So I think that the Planning Board has made a good decision in recommending these. It provides a transition from super-high density into lower density. It's a compromise on what was considered before, and I think there's some valid reasons brought by the neighbors to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
I too appreciate all the work Andrew's done for us. Tells us what to do, and we show up. I feel like I'm making the same arguments I made last year when people kept yammering about affordable housing. Now, I'm the chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and I'm on the Housing Authority, and I've been involved with housing for a very long time. I'm not against affordable housing, but the word is abused and used, depending on what the speaker is after. Affordable housing on Nantucket, because we've been to the state and they've acknowledged that the affordable housing on Nantucket is a whole different thing than something outside of Boston. There is a whole middle class of people here that don't qualify for covenants, that don't qualify for affordable housing, that still need to be housed. They're your professionals, they're your business owners like Jim Lyden, whose property's in this group. They have a right to maintain their homes. If that means they have to sell off one of the acres, they sell off one of the acres like I did in order to keep my home. There's varying degrees of what we all consider affordable, but affordable in a technical sense has a definition under the state law. Nobody's claiming these are going to be affordable in 80% or less of median income. I agree with Andrew, it is a matter of fairness. Can't read my own writing. Oh, it's a de facto, you know, when people get up who are after more open space, and we have a lot of open space, and I've said it before, we're sacrificing the human quotient here for more open space. A one-acre lot has a 7% ground cover. A two-acre lot has a 4% ground cover. That still leaves an awful lot of open space. So trying to get open space in a backdoor manner by saying you can't possibly subdivide a two-acre lot is ridiculous, and it's a bad way of getting open space. The other smokescreen thrown up is the increased density. If you have a two-acre lot, you have an eight-bedroom allowance, one per 10,000. You have two one-acre lots, it's four bedrooms per lot, it's still eight bedrooms total. So there's no increase in use. You just are able to sell off one or give one to your child without encumbering them under a covenant where they don't need and, most of the time, don't qualify for.
If you could wrap up, please.
So please vote this down. I mean, vote in favor of us, the Planning Board.
Thank you.
And the neighbors.
Okay. All right. So seeing no hands, we'll go to a vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion on Article 48, which is as printed in the warrant and made by the Planning Board. Okay, Mr. Lyden?
Hi, I'm Jim Lyden. I live on Evergreen Way, and I want to say first off...
Oh, wait, we can't hear you, I don't think. It's on. Just hold it closer to your mouth.
Is it on? How's that? Yeah, that's good. Jim Lyden, Evergreen Way. I first want to say I admire the Land Council's mission, absolutely. But occasionally, they're a bit short-sighted, and it was their, their position against the Richmond Development Property last year and their agreement with us in the neighborhood who caused Richmond to build the biggest development on island now, and it's about 100 feet from my house. So sometimes they're short-sighted, I think. But I want to tell you, I'm a lot like all the other families on Evergreen Way. Small businessman, kids, I've got a son who works with me, I've got four kids, a daughter home from Delaware, I still have a daughter in eighth grade. You know, I'm closing in on 70 years old, and at some point, I want to quit work. And I can't stay where I am and do that unless something like this goes through for me and all the other guys. My son and his wife don't qualify for covenant home, and they never will, and I'm glad. But I'd like to be able to keep our property in the family and give them a place to live. And if things like this don't go through and they don't start adapting this, all these two-acre lots will become summer homes, because nobody on island that works in the trades or is just a regular middle-class person will be able to afford buying any of this property. So these neighborhoods are just going to disappear, and we won't have any around neighborhoods anymore. So I wish you'd seriously consider passing this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Up in the back?
Hi, my name's Jamie Feely. We own three Evergreen, my wife and I, and we've had the pleasure of raising our two girls there. We bought the lot about 12 years ago. I stood in the same spot last year and addressed this same group in regards to the Richmond article that was up at the time. And I had put in, along with both of the Cedar Crest 1 and 2, it's the homeowner associations for Daffodil and Evergreen, several months of negotiations with the Richmond Group. And it resulted in 70 lots, they were going to be market lots, and I think 20 of them were going to be duplexes, eligible for duplexes. So a total of 90 lots, and it was our understanding, as we negotiated these two MOUs, which we successfully executed, that we would likely not have to have a cut-through road from the property that Richmond Group was developing to Evergreen or to Daffodil. And now, fast forward a year later, we had the special Town Meeting, and what passed or what resulted from the article passing, this 40R, is 369 residences. And as I understand it, we're almost certain to get a cut-through road down Evergreen Way. And things change, and the town needs affordable housing, and so I think this is good for the town. I don't think, I know that neither one of the homeowner associations showed up or got organized or opposed Richmond in any way this past year. But it would be nice for our neighborhood to have this transitional zoning and, you know, to hopefully mitigate a little bit of the adverse impact that this development, high-density development down the road is going to have on us. So I would just ask for your support on this, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Lowell?
Here we are again. Everybody has said what I wanted to say, so I've got something different. Can you, Mary, can you put the map back up, or whoever's running the show today? Thank you so much. Wait a minute. There we go. Okay. All this land out here, when it was developed in 1980, didn't have a single house or a road. There was nothing out there. We used to go watch the planes take off down here with an ice cream cone when I was growing up. The land out, as Andrew mentioned earlier, and I know that this isn't about this article, but it's something we have to look at as a community, just like sewer. Zoning and sewer are similar in the sense of how we think about somebody getting something for free. There are people in this room right now, they know who they are, not being funny, they think we're giving somebody something for nothing. Not true. Some people, yes, benefit more than others with sewer, some are going to benefit more than others with downzoning. But I'm going to tell you something. There's a lot of downzoning, excuse me, there's a lot of subdivision that happens every day by rich people that are the only ones that can buy land in town. Lots that have been sitting there with a house on them for years and years and years, and all of a sudden, like you see at 47 Cliff and some other ones that you see around, Dr. White's there next door, poof, there it goes, subdivided multimillion-dollar property, and they're paying our taxes for us, just so you know. And here we are, the regular Nantucketers, with this big two-acre lot stuff that got plugged in in '72 that nobody wanted to buy until around 1980. We're going to have to look at this a little at a time, at downzoning these areas. This is just one of them. This is going to continue to come up as the pressure is on for housing, for people to keep their property. Everybody's in a different financial situation, okay? This isn't, this isn't increasing your ability to, you know, buy another fire truck, build another school. All those arguments, it really is about people that owned this land back when it was really cheap, and now they have to do something with it. And that's what we're up against. It isn't just this zoning article. This is these, there's a couple of areas of the island that have huge lots with regular Nantucket residents year-round. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Glidden?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would like to just remind us that prior to the world we live in now, we now have lots where you can have three dwellings on them. You can have your first dwelling, you can have your second dwelling, you can have your third dwelling. As a tertiary dwelling, I think that's great. I think there's lots of options for young people to be on, and we're in this mess we are in now in regards to affordable housing because we did not plan that we would grow this much. I feel for Mr. Lyden, I feel for those who feel that it is challenging to try to maintain their properties. But I do think that there has to be a point as a community when we say, we can't just keep changing zoning to try to keep the people we have with us here, here. We need to think long-term about how do we maintain the viability of the community, and how we do that is we set long-term goals and we meet those benchmarks as we move forward. And it is challenging, being one of six. My family has one property, and I don't think all six of us are going to live on there. Unfortunately, we do get along well, but it's not going to happen. And so I'd ask you to strike down this article, and let's continue to move forward on affordable housing. We've made great strides with Richmond. Three years ago, they came forward, we shot them down, we came back, we negotiated, we were getting more affordable housing units out of that. That's what we need to do, and I'd ask you to shoot this article down. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sale?
I've been listening, coming to many Town Meetings and listening to a lot of this back-and-forth arguing about zoning for a long time, even though I only look 12. But I was also part of some of the comprehensive plan, planning, a very long time ago, and I'm sort of getting tired of having people tell us that we need to wait, or we need to plan better, or we need to talk about it more, or we need to think about all of this. The comprehensive plan, that's exactly what we're doing now. That's what this is part of. So let the Planning Board do their job, which we told them to do 20 years ago, and let's get it done.
Thank you. Okay. So I think we're ready to take a vote on this. This is a zoning article, so it requires a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion as made by the Planning Board, as printed in the warrant. A no vote will defeat that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Ew. Okay. So I guess we ought to do a hand count. So what we'll do is we're going to vote... So what we’ll do is we’re going to vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion, a no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and keep your hands raised till the tellers So I’d love to ask you, how many people remember how many Saturday town meetings we’ve done in recent memory? But that would require raising your hand, so I don’t think I should do that. I think I’ll just tell you that at least one of them wasn’t terribly memorable because a lot of us would have gone to our graves swearing there was only one Saturday town meeting in recent memory. But that is totally not true. We had a Saturday town meeting in 2012 on March 31st, and we had a Saturday town meeting in 2014 on Saturday, April 5th. And one of those town meetings was done in a day, and one of them wasn’t. And it’s sort of interesting because the one that went two days was 2012, and there weren’t that many articles on the warrant. And the one that we did in one day was in 2014, and there were 109 articles on the warrant. So, okay. So all those opposed to the motion, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised till the tellers have counted your vote. So in 2012, there were 98 articles, and it took us two days. And in 2014, there were 107 articles. We started at 8:30 in 2012, and we started at 9:00 in 2014. But somehow, 2014, we were able to just whip right through and finish. And this year, we also have 107 articles, and we started at 9 o’clock. So I’m thinking our chances are good. So someone asked how many articles were called in each of those years, and I don’t know the answer to that. If we come back on Monday, I will tell you. But there were 23 called today, which is a lot. All right, so that was just practice. We’re going to do it again because, just because, because it was our first-hand count and we hadn’t clarified certain things. So what we’re doing is we’re voting on the planning board’s motion on Article 48. A yes vote will adopt the motion as printed in the warrant, a no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised till the tellers have had an opportunity to count your vote. And this, by the way, is why we always say, don’t leave until we’ve gone on to the next article because you just never know. So all these people in the center feel like they haven’t been counted. Is somebody counting them? Now, all those opposed to the motion on Article 48, please raise your hands and keep your I didn’t ever say it, but in case anyone’s wondering, the people over here under this wing are non-voters and observers, so that’s why they’re not voting. So what else can I tell you? Well, the INM mentioned that what hashtag ATM 2016 was trending or something at some point? ACT ATM 2016? Oh, just 16, not 2016. Okay, well, obviously, don’t go by me on anything to do with tweeting, or Facebook, or check in with these guys, or somebody much younger than me. Yes?
Before I could get onto the school network, just by agreeing to their policy, I haven’t been able to get on, and I’m a guest networker, and I’m a internist, so I don’t have the school technology permit this year.
What? Wait, wait. Okay, you have to go on NPS public, not guest. There’s no password required for public. No, no, are you, do you have your normal counter thing that you put up? No? Okay. So on the motion on Article 48, yes, 279, no, 99. It’s a total of 378. Two-thirds is 252. The motion on Article 48 is adopted. Article 49. Article 49 is on page 92. It received a positive motion from the Finance Committee. I’ll ask for your unanimous consent to waive that reading. I’ll recognize Mr. Rector for the purpose of making that motion. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. This was called by both Mr. Lang and Ms. Timmerman. I’ll go to you, Mr. Lang, if you’re here. Oh, yeah, there you are.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Moderator, and thank you all in this room for listening to me. I am not here to argue the article. I would appreciate a map if that is possible. Thank you very much. In 2013, I purchased the property that is located directly below the property that’s outlined in red, property in red being the subject property. The area that is in orange is the two-acre zone. The area that’s in beige, to the left of that, is three-acre zone. And the area in yellow is the one-acre zone. I’m coming to you today not to try to convince you to vote one way or another, but to just try to point out a few facts that I think everybody should know so that they can make an intelligent decision on this. When I purchased the property at 7 Masquit Road, which is directly across from the subject property, on Masquit Avenue, rather, shortly before closing, it was discovered that the septic system had what’s called a regulatory failure. And what that means is that the regulations had changed so that now six feet was required between the leaching field and the groundwater, if I understand this correctly, which had previously been four feet. There are some very low areas on both the subject property as well as my own. And so I have certain concerns that the soil conditions there are pretty much right on the line as to whether or not you could actually build a septic system without going to an alternate system. To resolve the issue that I had, they had to put a new leaching field in, and it had to go on the highest elevation on the lot. My concerns with the, with downzoning this article from LUG 2 to LUG 1 are the following. Because of the regulatory failure of the septic system on my property, which was resolved, we are downzoning, first of all, in what is an unsued area. It’s unlikely that we’ll see sewer come to the Surfside area. So I have concerns that downzoning will, that people will be able to put septic systems on any lots that may be created by subdivision of the subject property. My second concern is that it is, the frontage is located on Masquit Avenue, which runs left and right of Surfside Road. In this particular case, it’s to the left, which is to the west. Masquit Avenue was improved around 1980, when it was, the area was being offered for sale. Subdivisions were, lots were subdivided at that time in blocks. There have been no road improvements to Masquit Avenue since then. It has deteriorated to what is, in places, a one-lane road. In fact, directly in front of the property, between the subject property and my own, there’s an area that is underwater much of the time. Therefore, with downzoning, it’s likely that we’re going to see subdivision. Who’s going to maintain the road? Who’s going to take care of the road when the increased use of the road causes further deterioration? Well, it’s probably the butters. A third consideration here is that, at this time, being a two-acre lot, you actually can do a secondary lot under the present zoning regulations. If this lot were to be downzoned, it could immediately be subdivided into two lots, which could then each have a secondary lot created. So we’re talking about two-and-a-half-acre lot becoming possibly four lots, and possibly each with its own septic system once again in an unsued area. Another concern that I have is that the precedent that would be set by changing this to a one-acre zone would be that all you have to do is go before town meeting with an article and try to downzone the area. Well, as you can see to the left of this property, we’re still in the two-acre zone, and there are properties, including the Gladlands area, that are all in the two-acre zone. So it seems logical to me that somebody might say, well, if they can do it, why can’t we? And so you’re going to have a transition from a one-acre zone, I mean, from a two-acre zone to ultimately becoming a one-acre zone. It’s kind of a buffer area between the Field Avenue properties and the properties along the Surfside Road. I don’t see that this article benefits anybody in the public sector, and I’m concerned about it. I, you know, naturally, it’s alarming whenever you see downzoning. It’s not a case of not in my backyard situation. When I bought my property, it was already one-acre zone. I consider this an important buffer, separating the one-acre zones on either side of what property that ultimately leads down into a wetland closer to Surfside Beach. That’s all I have to say. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Deborah Timmerman. This article was presented last year and was soundly defeated. It is not appropriate for a two-acre parcel surrounded by other two-acre parcels to subdivide. This goes against the carefully crafted Town Master Plan, the Surfside Area Work Plan that took over two years to do. If passed, this would allow two main, two secondary, and two tertiary structures on each of these, you know, parcels. On the last page of your warrant article is a description of spot zoning. And I’ll read a little bit of it. “The Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court found that spot zoning occurs where one lot or a small area has been singled out for treatment less onerous than that imposed upon nearby indistinguishable properties. Where a zoning change is designed solely for the economic benefit of the owner of the property receiving special treatment and is not in accordance with a well-considered plan for the public welfare. This is especially important where the growth of the municipality has been addressed with the plan, which it is.” I asked that you defeat this article. I agree with the previous speaker that it would set a precedent. I don’t think the point of our plan here on the island should be to make as many lots as we can. We can’t have everybody in the world live here. What we need to do, other than the existing zoning build-out, is affordable housing, and then we will have a happy balance. Every time you subdivide something, it’s like a carrot in front of you for the affordable housing ratio. You’re never going to catch it. Please defeat this. Thank you.
Mr. Lowell, or Ms. Snell, whichever one of you wants to...
Thank you, Madam Moderator, again, Leslie Snell for the planning board. First of all, I’d like to point out that this was a citizen petition article. This is not an article that was proposed by the planning board. But the planning board, during their public hearing process, did consider it. They did consider it for compliance with the master plan. And the planning board found that it was a reasonable proposal, and it was consistent with the objectives contained within the master plan. To address some of the points that were brought up by previous speakers, the first one dealing with septic issues, these are proposed to be one-acre lots, and septic systems have to be designed by licensed professionals, and that would have to be accommodated on these lots. Second of all, there was a concern about access. Masquit and the road to the north, here, those are private ways, and they have to be maintained by the property owners that own property along those ways. And prior to a lot being divided, the planning board would have to make a determination And prior to a lot being divided, the Planning Board would have to make a determination that the access was adequate and that the roadways had adequate width, grade, and construction to provide access to the lots being proposed. The other comment had to do with spot zoning. This is not spot zoning. Spot zoning is when you single out a property that is not in any way connected to that particular zone. And here you will see, this is LUG 2 to the east. These are all in LUG 1 to the south. These are in LUG 1, which is the same district that's proposed for this lot. And I'll also point out, as to the density, these lots are half-acre lots, and these to the south, some of which benefited from a prior rezoning from LUG 2 to LUG 1 that was approved by this town meeting, is consistent with the proposal that you are now considering. So I would ask you to please support the Planning Board, support their process, and vote in favor of this article. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Lowell.
This lot should have been in three years ago when the lot was subdivided that Mr. Lang bought three years ago. I don't like talking about stuff like this, and it gets personal, but unfortunately, when things get brought up, it gets -- it can get personal. So, you know, you should know that the lot owned by the person that called the article got downzoned three years ago. Okay? So... Now, as far as sewer goes, are you kidding me? You know how much septic we've got on lots? Less than half the size of this? Are we sure? The Bartlett Road Somerset area was all RC-2 zoning since 19 -- when it started to get developed in the early '80s. It should have been sewed 35 years ago. So we'll be talking about that next town meeting. But my point is that these huge lots, there's no issue with septic. Okay? Secondly, upzoning. Now, my good friend Cormac -- there he is. He knows when we upzone. We upzoned tonight. We didn't call the articles. Okay? We never talk about when we upzone. We only talk when we downzone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Ms. Phillips? Wait, there's a microphone right there.
Mr. Lowell, with respect, the reason why upzoning doesn't get discussed is because it is something which is for the health of the island. As Ms. Timmerman said, we cannot fit on this island everybody who's going to eventually want to live here. We need to -- what I'm concerned here is creeping zoning. And I was concerned with the prior one, which unfortunately, to me, got passed for Marble Road, that, again, it's creeping zoning, creeping downzoning. And I think that, also your dismissal that these will all be, you know, septic's will not be an issue -- well, septic's are an issue, period. We want to have the fewest septic systems possible, because they all contribute to the pollution of our water. And I do not think we can airily dismiss making more density, allowing more septic systems. And I hope very much that we vote this down. Thank you.
Kate Snell, again. At the risk of being repetitive, there's a reason that we have a Planning Board. There's a reason that they are elected. There's a reason that we have them go through all of this. And they have to live here, too. And if you think that they are not going through every possible scenario to make sure that this island is exactly what we've all decided we want it to be before making recommendations like this and/or approving other people's suggestions, I think that's crazy. Common sense is trust in the people that we have elected to go through this process for years before we even see it and vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Santa Maria.
Thank you. Roberto Santa Maria, Department of Health. In this area, the town is separated into a bunch of watersheds. To answer one of the previous speaker's questions is, this area, all the septic's here, is not contributing any of the pollutants to our -- to Hummock Pond or to the harbor or anything. The water in this area is going straight down to the ocean and being flushed out. It is not contributing to the nitrogen and everything in the harbor. That was just a point of clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who hasn't spoken?
Thank you.
If you could identify yourself.
Oh, yes. Linda Holland. I live in Scanset. Last year's town meeting, I think, was very successful because we fought to take a stand to reestablish our goals toward creating more affordable housing. And I think we were -- we are on a good track. And in general, I would like to see the town look at all subdivisions everywhere and say, "If you wish to increase our density, you should help us in some way to address our housing problems." It is -- that is our biggest community issue. And we are seeing zoning changes that are not doing this. And I just think if the Planning Board and the developers and the property owners knew that the community really wanted affordable housing, that they would come back with all plans, no matter where they were, including this. And I think this one should come back in another year with a component. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, and then I'll go to you, Mr. Barada.
I'm with Kate Snell on this one, also. There's an issue of fairness here. When zoning came in in 1972 -- I live in the Badlands, which is to the left of what you're looking at here. It's on my license plate. Everybody knows where I live. It was all two-acre zoning, the whole thing. The Boulevard, most of Surfside except down on the water side, all through the Badlands, all the way over to Maui Comet, because nobody wanted to live out there. Nobody knew what they were going to do with these vast tracts of land. SRT owned all the Boulevard and all the way out to the airport. Nobody knew what the subdivision was going to look at, look like. And they just said, "All right, let's just throw it in the two-acre zoning." That's how they did it. They stood -- they sat around a table in 1972, our forefathers, and said, "Well, we don't know what's happening. We'll put that over there, put that over there, put that over there." We've been trying to dig ourselves out of nonsensical zoning since 1972. I was the zoning administrator for 25 years. I've seen the insanity. This is a matter of fairness, however, because what we should have done was put it in three years ago, as Nat said. To the east, half-acre. To the south, Mr. Lang's property got a benefit of that same subdivision. To the west, which is left -- I don't have a little thing. That was all two-acre zoning. I don't know how long ago we did that. Couple of years ago, we put that whole thing on the left to one-acre zoning. You can see Abrams Quarry 40B right smack in the middle. The LUG 3 is there as a buffer because that's Land Bank property. It was the old railroad bed. So that is what -- we gave it, and we -- all these open space areas, Andrew's been doing it for the last two or three years, all these open space things have been bumping up the zoning, because why would you have lower zoning when it's open space? So that's how that got there. So it's a matter of fairness to split it in half, have it look like everything out here, and move on. This, again, they're abusing the word "affordable." Affordable on Nantucket, for the state purposes, is basically 80% of median and below. Nobody in here -- most people in here don't qualify. There's a whole...
If you could wrap up, please.
Yeah, I'll wrap it up. There's a whole slew of people, like myself, like Ron, like everybody else, like everybody in the Badlands, that bought our property for like $50,000 or $30,000 back in 1983. My realtor tried to talk me out of buying it, because who wants to buy back there? That's what's happened. We've hang on -- he was one of the first people to build a house on Masquit, and now things are changing. The dynamics are changing. But my grandparents' property up on the cliff that was sold, it was one big lot, corner of Delaney and Cliff, and that's -- and the subdivider that bought it put it into four $2 million lots. It's happening all over Cliff Road. It's happening all over Pulpus. People are subdividing, and somehow, we're not running around going nuts about that. We're talking year-round people.
Thank you.
In much higher lot sizes than have to be.
Mr. Barada.
Thomas Barada. Tosh Malley. I hear words being thrown around, "upzone," "downzone." I'd like to get the definition of what downzoning is from the Planning Department, because we're using the word "downzone" in this terminology when we're going to split into two lots. That's actually upzoning, because you're increasing the density of the property. So I'd like to get clarification if the wording is correct, because for the last 10 years, I've been hearing "downzone" when it's actually "upzone," and "upzone" when it's supposed to be "downzone." So could we get clarification on that?
I'll try. Mr. Forrest or Ms. Snell, do you want to enlighten us?
According to the definition, downzoning is reducing the density of use. So we're speaking of splitting this property into two acre lots, two one-acre lots. That increases density. So that would be upzoning. Just want to clarify it, because people are listening, and just want to make sure that people understand the definitions of the words being used. Thank you.
Okay. So, yes, Ms. Mooney?
I have no idea, but I'm going to Ms. Mooney. I'll go to the planning people in a minute. I'm not sure I understand why we care, but I'll come back to Ms. Snell to tell us. Go ahead.
Hi, Erica Mooney. Ms. Timmerman said that not everyone can live here. There's not enough room. And somebody else said something similar, but this is a person that's lived here forever, that has children and grandchildren. And, you know, when we talk about affordable housing, we can't only focus on the lowest people that don't have housing, because my children might not have housing someday. I may need to have the opportunity to subdivide so that they can have a home here. And I think that you have to take that in mind, that there are middle-class people here, not just low-income people, middle class, that need to do this to provide housing for their families and for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Snell? Can you clarify the upzoning-downzoning dilemma?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Leslie Snell. And it is confusing. Upzoning is going from a lower intensity use to a higher intensity use. So regardless of the terminology, in this case, the proposal is from a two-acre zone to a one-acre zone, and it would result in the creation of one additional building lot.
Thank you.
If you could address your remarks to the chair. Technically, you're not supposed to turn your back on me.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize that.
That's all right.
The character of the island, I think, is in jeopardy here. And I think that we get so caught up in, you know, our needs here, that that's getting lost. This is still a very special place. It's still considered rural. And if you change that lot to one, then you're -- then it's like creeping. Then you're bordering on something else that can be subdivided. Now, that lot to the left of the red block still says LUG 2. Is that not LUG 2?
That's correct.
It is LUG 2. So how is he downsized?
He's currently LUG 2. He's in the red.
No, 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 not the one who's proposing.
Oh, Mr. Lang is to the right. He's in the LUG 1 area.
Oh, I thought he was in that house to the left there.
No.
Okay. So if you understand that if you subdivide Mr. Santos's lot, then the next man is going to say, "Well," you know, and it's creeping. This is two-acre zoning. This is what the master plan chose, the Surfside Area Work Plan Group chose. And I don't understand why every year we come back and try and change what we've already voted on. I hope this gets voted down. I think it's a really bad precedent, and it's -- I think it's totally inappropriate.
Thank you. Okay. Way up in the back? Just stand up and... Wait, we'll go there, and then I'll come -- hang on to that, and I'll come to you next. Go ahead. Yes. No, go ahead. You're good.
Hi. Benji McGowan. I just, I mean, the only issue I have, I'm wondering, with all this zoning changing, I mean, our forefathers did it to change and try and keep the uniqueness of this island. Where are the cars going to go? And what roads -- what land are we going to take when we have to build all these roads and change all the roads so that people can move on the island? I mean, all the changing that we're doing and all the building, how are we going to get anywhere when we need to go to work and stuff like that? I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tafe, up in the back.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Patrick Tafe. This is a subdivision, and there's something that I've never heard anyone talk about on Nantucket before. I'm going to say a bad word, Martha's Vineyard. When you create a subdivision on Martha's Vineyard, I believe the majority of the towns there, the developer has to give up a piece of the property and create a youth lot. And in all the years I've been here, I've never heard anyone give anything back or be asked to give anything back. And here, we're being asked to just give it away to a special interest. I would just ask people to vote this down, and we need to find a way to solve our affordable housing crisis. And maybe we can get the ball rolling, if anybody down at the desks there hear this. If you want to subdivide, you create a youth lot. You give something back to the island, because you're taking something from the island. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just saw? Okay, there we go. I can do that most of the time. I think that's a really...
If you could identify yourself.
Yeah, my name is Marshall Keys. I'm sorry. I think the last remarks were important. What we're talking about here is uncontrolled development. This just happens to be the cause that's falling into it. In Boston, they have something similar to what you talk about called "linkages." If I want to put up a high-rise in downtown Boston, I have to build X units of low-cost housing in other areas, or I can't do what they're talking about doing here. In Naples, Florida, to take the other end of the spectrum, if I build a house in Naples, Florida, I have to make an impact payment to the community that accounts for increased size of schools, increased public library funds, and so forth and so on. I think we need to go ahead. We've been working for this on 45 -- for 45 minutes, and it's not the issue. The issue is something that needs to come back to the Planning Board during the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think you've already been heard -- is there someone up there I haven't heard from? Yes, go ahead.
Madam Moderator, I'm Jim Elward. I'd like to move the previous question, please.
Oh, okay. So a motion to move the question will end debate. A yes vote will adopt the motion to move the question, and then we'll go directly to a vote on the motion on Article 49. A no vote will defeat that motion, and we'll continue debate on Article 49. Does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion to move the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries unanimously. On Article 49, then, the main motion is made by the Planning Board. Does require a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
That motion does not carry. Okay, we'll do a hand count. I don't want any question since I've been asked. So all those in favor of the motion on Article 49, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised till the tellers have had an opportunity to count your vote. All those opposed to the main motion on Article 49, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised till the tellers have counted your vote. Okay, on Article 49? Yes, 173, no, 185. Article 49 is not adopted. Okay, Article 50 appears on page 92, continues to page 93 where we have the finance committee, I mean, the planning board's recommendation. I'll ask for your unanimous consent to waive reading that. It is as printed in the warrant, and I'll recognize Ms. Rector for the purpose of making that motion.
So.
Thank you, is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Ms. Timmerman?
This is going to have the same thoughts as the last one. This is a rural area of the island. It is the country, it is all two-acre zoning, and the people that bought there, bought there because there was a comfortable amount of property. That doesn't mean we're all rich. I almost lost my house during the recession, I hung on by a thread. So just because I want to keep two-acre zoning doesn't mean I'm rich. I'm not rich, anything but. I drive a 2,000 car. Anyway, this is, there's a principle here that's really offensive to so many people. You buy into an area that looks such-and-such, in this case, two-acre zoning. It's beautiful, there's kind of a transition from the busier town area, you're coming up Surfside, you go down Boulevard towards the beach, it's beautiful. We seem to be just chipping away at that beauty. And what we're doing each time we chip away is we're putting another little hole in the golden egg. And soon, we might as well just be Cape Cod because that's what it's going to look like. I just, I just really think this is bad. And again, this is not helping affordable housing, this is doing nothing for affordable housing, it's just making more lots, and in that area especially, I can see it coming with summer houses and more summer people. And they're not going to be putting any affordable housing on their property. So I really ask that you vote this down, and hopefully we can stop this trend of subdividing our beautiful area of Surfside. And these are all in Surfside, which is, again, we got the 106 Surfside, and we've got, you know, all sorts of things already. It would be lovely to keep this rural. It's a beautiful place to walk if you haven't, if you don't go walking there. Thank you.
Ms. Snell?
Hi, Leslie Snell again for the planning board. This is yet another citizen petition that is not sponsored by the planning board, but the planning board did consider it during their public hearing process, and they determined that the proposal was consistent with the objectives contained within the master plan and the Surfside Area Plan. The lots that are proposed to be rezoned are outlined in red. Those are currently in the LUG2 district, which is essentially a two-acre district. They're proposed to go to the LUG1 district, which is essentially a one-acre district, and there's one-acre zoning all to the south of this area. The rezoning would mostly result in non-conforming lots becoming more conforming to zoning, and there is some very modest subdivision potential here at the corner where potentially four new lots could be created. Today, a lot of people have talked about how these proposals result in the creation of additional building lots, but that they don't result in the creation of additional affordable housing. And I'd like to remind everyone here that we recently had a housing study completed, and within that housing study, it talked a lot about affordable housing and what our needs are. But one of the largest themes of that study was that we need more housing stock. And until we have more housing stock, regardless of the price point, we're not going to get to a good affordable level. So while that may not particularly apply to this article, I just wanted to make that point. I'd like to ask you to support the planning board's recommendation and the planning board's process and support this article. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Ms. Johnson up here, and I have a map from you, I think. Okay. Yeah, I'll come over there next. Yep.
Joanne Johnson, 40 Lover's Lane. I wanted to include this slightly enlarged map of the area, and the red area is the same as the one you saw on the previous map that outlines the portions that are being addressed in this article. I live at 40 Lover's Lane, which is the blue box at the top of the red area, and then the blue boxes at the bottom of the red area are the other ones that are large enough to be divided if this were to pass. In between the blue boxes at the top and the ones at the bottom are lots that are already divided, and they're already about a half acre. I have a two-acre lot. Above my lot, there's like a yellow box you can hardly see, that is half-acre zoning. So from the beginning of Lover's Lane on Old South Road, you have commercial property, then you have half-acre zoning, then you have the LUG2, just two-acre zoning. And on Lover's Lane proper, this part that we're looking at right now, my house is the only property that's in conformity in the LUG2 section. So I am asking that we approve this article. I was not actually part of bringing it to town floor, but I am completely in agreement with it. And we changed the zoning to LUG1 that will only allow me to divide the property in half. I have one child, and hopefully I'll be able to give him a lot. And the lots at the bottom are only two acres or slightly more, there are not going to be a huge subdivision. So please support this. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to go over here to Mrs. Varian. She's not a voter, but she does own one of the lots that's affected.
Hi, Madam Moderator. My name's Miriam Varian, and I'm supporting this article, obviously.
Can you point the microphone, like, yeah, try that.
Okay. There are just seven lots along the dirt road of Lover's Lane, and these are all in Lug 2, but well under the two acres in size requirement. My lot is one that is rather large, it's almost three acres on the corner of Okoa and Lover's Lane. And just aligning these non-conforming lots is just that, and it would be consistent with the lots surrounding that area. It's my belief that the zoning of these lots would just be in place, sorry, would just be in place on the south side of Boulevard and further down Lover's Lane. I moved there 16 years ago with my late husband, and we planned to remain there for, hopefully, the rest of our lives. Due to circumstances, my life dramatically changed for myself and my family, and allowing me the possibility of dividing this would enable me to look after my daughter a little bit, my grandson, and it's not going to change anything dramatically in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collier?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Cormac Collier with the Nantucket Land Council. I won't repeat everything else that I said on the previous, or the one before that, but to my good friend Nat Lowell, who was saying that septics do not cause a problem on one-acre lots. We just spent $41 million to sewer Monomoy, which is one acre. They cause a problem. This is directly in the Wellhead Recharge District, which is located in that, our wellfield, the well, proper well, is located in that Lug 3 area in the state forest. Again, unless they're sewed or have the ability to be sewed, I think it is, from an environmental point of view, not appropriate to be promoting additional septics, additional intensity, and additional subdivision. As regard to Ms. Snell's comments that this is in conformance with the Surfside Area Plan, I'd have to take issue with that. I unfortunately have read that thing back to forth and front to back 500 times. The only thing that plan stated was a recommendation on a zoning change that was approved by town meeting approximately five years ago, and that's along the Pochek Ave. It had nothing to do with these lots. And then furthermore, I've seen what the rezoned areas, what they're selling for, 1.7, 1.8 million. All the lots involved here, they're assessed over $2 million, the ones that can be resubdivided. Sure, there's a question of what affordable is and what affordable isn't, and over the 680,000 affordable covenant threshold, some people on this island can afford in terms of year-round families. I don't know many that can afford 1.7, 1.8. When you're building market rate development and additional subdivision, who services those people? The year-rounders, the year-rounders that need housing. I ask that you vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fredericks?
Hello, my name's Dave Fredericks. I am going to butter, to some extent, I live on White Street, which is just off the edge of this, the red lines on the lower part of this. My property is not affected, although I was part of a discussion last year about a bigger article that I think, in some sense, also went down because it was, it encompassed so many different things. If you look at this piece of property, or what's being talked about in two pieces, from Okoa headed north, other than Ms. Varian's lot and Mrs. Johnson's lot, the rest are non-conforming lots that are under an acre and presently making these LUG2 just allow a lot of housekeeping, if you will. That remain, the other two folks talked about family and talked about affordability. All right, so we're, and nothing against Land Council, I understand their view, and I don't think these folks are saying they're going to be selling these lots. I think their hunt is to be able to do a small subdivision and hand their property down to their family, thus making it affordable for a Nantucket family. And that is part of what we have this interesting challenge. I've heard the word culture, I've heard the word, talk about the character of the island. The island is 60% open land, we buy more open land every day. Our current zoning allows for 4% of the property to be used when it's LUG2, and if someone was to do the math, that's about 3,500 square feet. On a one-acre lot, you're allowed to do 7%, which is about 2,800 square feet. Under no circumstance are we over exercising these lots. What we are trying to do is find where zoning aligns with things like Old South Road migrating down Lover's Lane and aligning in a way that our families have opportunities. That's really what's being talked about here. And I think we have to change to some extent, and I think Linda Williams nailed it, and I hate saying I agreed with Linda, but she nailed the one we defined affordability. Affordability is sometimes what we can do for our children at the moment, and sometimes what we can do is make land that we have available, that is for all practical purposes, access to us, available to our families. And that really, if you were to break this article in half, and if people thought that was something more tasteful, I would be happy to sponsor a change in this to just include the lots that run from Okoa up Lover's Lane as a modification to this article.
Thank you. Yeah, let me go down to Ms. Gookin, and then I'll come over to you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Madam Moderator.
Whatever.
It's nice to see you. I am very much in favor of affordable housing, and I would support this article if those lots had affordable housing covenant restrictions on them.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
I was one of the principal drafters of the Surfside Area Plan. Many meetings, we discussed these large lots and trying to correct zoning to more adequately reflect the patterns of development, which is what we're trying to do on Lover's Lane. Probably 90% of the affordable housing that meets the state requirement for affordable housing, whether it's ownership-occupied or whether it's rental, between Housing Nantucket and Housing Authority, Satrum's Path, Abrams Quarry, 90% is probably in the Surfside Area Plan that they covered. The rest of the island has done very little to take part in affordable housing provision. So what you're doing, basically, is penalizing those of us who bought 33 years ago, in my case, for dirt cheap. My kids are grown, life has changed, and you're penalizing us when we have adult children because we happened to buy someplace nobody else wanted to buy at that time. Granted, the island has changed drastically, prices have gone up, but we are land-rich, cash-poor. When I go back to my grandparents' house on Cliff Road, they didn't give anything back, they weren't required to have an affordable unit up there of the four $2 million lots they put on our property. You're penalizing year-round population. I know 99... I know 99% of the people involved here, except for the new owners on the corner, they're all year-round, longtime year-round people. The Johnsons are one of the first ones out there on Lover's Lane. Everybody sort of followed along after that, and nobody even knew where Lover's Lane was. You couldn't go down at half the time because your car would disappear in a hole.
If you could wrap up, please.
But I think we need to start addressing those of us who've been here, longtime property owners. What's affordable for us is not affordable under the state requirements, but it keeps us here, it keeps us being able to hold onto our own homes. And stop with this "put the covenant thing on it." We're addressing that. The plan is going to be produced in the next week or so, the plan production thing. Affordable Housing Trust Fund, you voted through the 1 million earlier. We're going to talk about Article 82 later on. We're going to be doing all kinds of housing initiatives. They've got, I don't know, 40, 50 units from Housing Nantucket. We've got 40 units at Satrum's Path. We have 40 units at the Housing Authority. So we are addressing it, but you shouldn't continue to penalize those who want to just create two one-acre lots. That's huge. That's like half the distance of Pine Street.
Thank you. Mr. Copko?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Affordable housing, water quality, even growth management, these are all things that I've always thought were very, very important. And there are issues involving those things that are hills that are worth dying on for. This article is not one. As these articles with these smaller things keep coming up, there are ways to bring these areas into comportment with the zoning around them. These are part of the master planning process and comporting with that, not moving away from them. And when we talk about affordable housing, let's put them in the context of the people who live here and the generational families that we're talking about here. This article will essentially bring that whole area into comportment with what's already there and what's already around it. Let's, when it comes to growth management and water quality and affordable housing, let's bite off the big pieces and fight them out here on town meeting floor. This article is not one. So I would urge you to vote yes, and let's move on.
Mr. Sanders?
Grant Sanders, 14 Dennis Drive. I love an opportunity to stand up and talk after my friend Michael Copko, who has been a friend of mine for a long time and completely disagree with him. When my wife and I first moved to the island, my wife was born here, but we met in Boston. We moved to the island and after living in a summer cottage for, until it got too cold to live there, we moved to that little cottage on the corner of White Street and Lover's Lane, thanks to the kindness of a really wonderful island family. And it was great to live there. And before we moved out and bought our first home, they offered to sell us that lot. And I have to tell you that if we had purchased that lot, it's probably worth 10 times now what they offered to sell it to us for, and that was very generous. And they did it because they wanted an island family to live there. And if I lived there now, I would be with two tuitions to pay for and, you know, and I would be tempted to leave. I would be tempted to subdivide and build and leave that lot because it would get me out of a hole. And, you know, these are decisions that we all have to make, and we make them on a personal level. Now, and I understand that, I understand what everybody has to deal with, because we all have our things to deal with, but this is a Lug 1 strip between a Lug 3 and a Lug 2. It just seems inappropriate to me. I love that area, the island. I spent a lot of time there. I think it ought to stay the way it is and not give people the incentive to build a lot, to put a lot of septic systems in, and create more density. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. There's a woman up in the back section. Okay.
Hi, my name is Andrea Coffin. I actually benefited from the town subdividing a lot on Okera from my parents. If it wasn't for the town allowing me to do that, me and my husband would not be here today. There's no way for people that are my age to get affordable housing that says I make way too much to get something like that. To me, my affordable housing was my parents being able to subdivide and sell it to me and my husband. I feel that if these people are trying to get housing for their own families, we should vote it in. These are islanders helping their own families. You're islanders helping islanders. Please vote yes on this.
Thank you. Yep, the woman in the back row.
Jen Erickson, Tacoma Way. I'd like to point out that the Planning Board has spent a tremendous amount of time with the various area groups going over this stuff, designating which areas are to be residential and what the appropriate density would be, areas that are commercial, and areas that are open space. Right across the street from there is designated open space. The land bank is buying up property all the time for open space. We're not necessarily restoring the parcels that we can use for people to live in. This is an area, we've heard on a personal level, that the people that are in there want to be in compliance. The Planning Board has come up with these areas, and every year we come to town meeting, we need to support them in the fact that they're trying to designate areas for specific uses. This is an area where people need to live, where we could build possibly a few more houses. It doesn't matter whether or not it's for, you know, the low income or whatever. This is about keeping our families here and making, supporting the Planning Board in how to bring these things into compliance.
Thank you. Mr. DiCosta?
I wasn't going to speak on any of these zoning articles, but I can't help it. Everyone sits here and they talk about when I came here 20 years ago, 30 years ago, and I came here, and what was it, '74, Mr. Grant, and you moved into that little cottage? Okay, I want everyone to take a deep breath and hear this. This is not the Nantucket of 1974 and '75 anymore. I have a 25-year-old son. He will not be living here, more than likely, unless I die and leave him my house. Everyone in this room knows a young person, Andrea's, you hit the nail right on the head. If her parents couldn't subdivide that piece of land and give it to her, she would not be here today. Not every one of us, every one of us knows someone who is not going to qualify for what we call affordable housing. 80% of the medium income, the Housing Bank is great, if we get it through the state, that'll be great, the 40Bs are great, but not everyone is going to qualify for this. There's a whole generation of Nantucketers that we are chasing out of here right now. And if we don't allow these little areas to be cut up into smaller lots, I'm not saying every one of them's going to go to some Nantucket kid, but a good majority of them are, we need to stop worrying about the potential that somebody might make a few bucks off of a subdivision, and start worrying about where the next generation of Nantuckers are going to live, where that high line's going to be taking more than 500 people a trip, it's going to be taking 1,000 a trip, and the community of Nantucket is going to be living on the Cape.
Thank you. I think we're getting close to a vote. Does anyone have anything? All right, way in the back, Kate Phillips, I think? You want to stand up and get a microphone?
Hi, Kate Raphael. I just wanted to, I needed something clarified to vote. Joanne had mentioned, I'm looking at this long strip along Lover's Lane, correct?
Yes.
Okay. She had mentioned that there was a huge section that were all half acres. This drawing makes it look like the whole thing is Lug 2. Is the whole thing Lug 2?
Who's got the, can you guys point out what we're talking about with your handy-dandy?
I think it would be helpful if it was clarified that, of what Joanne was talking about, that not this entire section is Lug 2, that there are half-acre lots inside or in between.
All right. So maybe put up Joanne's map.
Yeah.
Well, hang on. Okay. So, this area over here is LUG 2. This area up here, which is not the subject of the article, is R20, which is 20,000 square feet. This is Joanne Johnson's lot, which is one acre, two acres. The, and this is, the red is what we're talking about. So her lot has subdivision potential, then these lots are all one acre, half acre, small, unsubdividable. They're not, they're currently non-conforming. And then you get down here, and there are a couple of lots, these two, which would have the, these three, which would have the possibility of subdivision. Is that essentially the case? So these are all non-conforming currently to LUG 2 and would become, still be non-conforming, but less non-conforming. Less non-conforming, but not completely conforming. Let's not go there. Does that answer your question?
Oh, there we go. Yes, thank you, because it makes it look like the entire road is going to be changed, and that's not the truth. There's only Joanne's property and another property at the end, and what, two other properties? So it's like four properties, it looks like, that would be...
That would have additional potential.
Yes.
Yes, correct. These would be changed, but not have subdivision potential because they're just becoming less non-conforming.
Right. Well, I just wanted that to be clarified because that changes everything, rather than looking at it and looking like, oh, the whole road's going to be changed. That's not the truth of it. So, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything new on this article? I feel like we're getting to the point where we're kind of repeating ourselves a bit.
I'm leaning toward what Mrs. Zimmerman said, because I'm color-coding what we had before, and it looks like it's an encroachment issue. And I don't think we should be looking at zoning to create affordable housing. Okay? Zoning is zoning, affordable housing is another whole thing, and it isn't necessarily going to guarantee affordable housing. The other issue is, we're talking about more people, more houses, and we've just built a very big police force, we're building a bigger hospital, we're building a bigger school. I think we need to think outside the box and say, how many people, houses can this little island afford to sustain? Everybody can't come and live here. It's just not going to happen. And the more people we have here, the more services we're going to need, and it's going to get costly.
Okay. I'm going to go over here to Mr. Kizer, and then we're going to just go to a vote.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Moderator and fellow members. I just want to say, if you take notice, to all the people that are speaking about they have two acres, they want to make it into one, I believe you see they're mostly all working class, middle-class people, great people, a lot of character, and they're all mostly want to do this so they can help, you know, help their kids out, make sure they don't leave. Now, all those people, great work ethics, great character, and a lot of people that don't want to do this, I mean, I don't know. It doesn't seem like they have a lot of family that they're trying to make room for. But I'd say to definitely approve this, and other ones like it, because again, we're going to preserve the work ethic that gets handed down to these kids, it's a great asset to the island. So, that's about what I get to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to go to a vote on the motion on Article 50. A yes vote will adopt the motion as printed in the warrant. A no vote will defeat that motion. It does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Okay. I think that passes, but I bet someone will want a hand count. Okay. So, all those in favor, please raise your hands until the tellers have had an opportunity to count your vote. So while you're doing that, I'm just going to show you my beautiful gavel that I didn't use because I'm so afraid of it. It's, this is something that the town clerk brings out of the vault once a year for me to ring in the meeting with. It's an ivory gavel, has a beautiful silver plaque on it, and it was presented to the Town of Nantucket by Captain James F. Brown in 1898. And it had gone missing for a while, which is sort of interesting, and sometimes in the last 20 years, someone turned up with it and wanted the town to have it and gave it back to the town clerk to have for the Town of Nantucket, and I think that's kind of neat. So, I get to look at it once a year, and then I put it away before I do any damage to it, give it back to her, and she can put it in the vault. Okay. All those opposed to the motion on Article 50, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised until the tellers have counted your vote. I also want to point out, it comes in this really sort of neat gavel box. Ah, the town clerk tells me that this box, which is perfect for gavels and has this beautiful detail on the front of it, is an antique glove box. So, that's kind of cool. Are you voting or asking a question?
I have a question.
Yes.
As we are talking antiquities, do we still have the Boston Post cane?
Ah, the Boston Post cane. Who has the Nantucket, the Boston Post cane? Catherine does? Yes, we do still have it.
Does this...
You're not, you're not old enough yet.
I sincerely hope to be. Does this, does this mean that the oldest individual on Nantucket does not have it? I believe that's who it's awarded to. Am I correct?
I don't know anything about it, but I will attempt to find out. Ms. Stover? How did, what did you do to get possession of this, and what's the story?
What we lovingly call in the clerk world is the Nantucket death stick. It used to be given out to the oldest resident, and then the selectmen who, I mean, their minds are like a steel trap, and nothing gets by them, they noticed that within a couple weeks or a month, two months, people were leaving, and leaving feet first. So they decided, you know what, we're going to retire this. So it's been retired to my vault, and we have visiting hours, 2 to 4, 7 to 9, every day. You can come look at it anytime you like, but unless the selectmen are going to resurrect that, that's where it's going to stay. Thanks.
It is your thing. Okay. So on Article 50, yes, 293, no, 104. That's, two-thirds has been met. Article 50 is adopted. So, we go now to Article 52. So, we go now to Article 52. Article 52 received a not-to-adopt motion, move to take no action from the planning board. Isaiah Stover, who was the proponent of the article, has presented us with a motion, a positive motion. He's here to present it. We're going to put it up on the screen in just a sec. It's moved that chapter 139, zoning of the code of the Town of Nantucket be amended as follows. One, to amend Section 2 definition as follows. Tiny house unit. I guess I should read that, just so that you all know what it says. A detached structure containing a dwelling unit with less than a total of 500 square feet constructed on a movable trailer to be attached to a foundation pursuant to a building permit issued in accordance with zoning bylaw, Chapter 13926. Only one tiny house unit shall be allowed per lot. The tiny house unit shall not be a recreational vehicle, commonly known as an RV, auto home, shipping container, motor vehicle, semi-trailer, camper, or boat, and shall not be located upon a lot with a commercial or other non-residential use. The tiny house unit shall be owned by a not-for-profit religious or educational entity, or shall be the primary residence of a persons, or the individual beneficiary, beneficiaries of a legal entity that holds title, common title, or land lease to the property, or any direct family member of that person's, their child parent, grandparent, brother or sister, or their spouse, child, parent, grandparent, brother or sister. A tiny house unit may be a primary dwelling unit, or may be located on a lot in lieu of an otherwise permitted secondary dwelling, garage apartment, or tertiary dwelling. If located on a lot with a primary dwelling, secondary dwelling, or garage apartment, the planning board shall make a determination regarding the adequacy of access to the lot and structures prior to the issuance of a building permit. Planning board approval shall be valid for a period of two years from the date of plan endorsement. And then, we would amend Section 7A of the use chart by inserting in the use column between accessory apartment and garage apartment, a new use, tiny house unit. It would be allowed by right in R5, R10, R20, R40, LUG1, LUG2, and LUG3 zoning districts. We then amend 7B prohibited uses in all districts as follows. Two, use of a trailer or building-like container for a residential purpose or as a principal or accessory building or structure, except for tiny house units, or as necessary for storage of chemicals and/or equipment by the Nantucket Fire Department. And four, to amend Section 18B table of parking requirements by inserting in the tertiary dwelling column, tertiary dwelling, tiny house unit. Is that your motion, Mr. Stover?
So moved, Madam Moderator.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Mr. Stover.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator. My name's Isaiah Stover, and I'm here to talk about tiny houses, so I'll try and keep this short. Tiny houses are essentially no different than any other structure we have here. The only difference that separates a tiny house from anything else we have here is the trailer. So, I'm going to speak to that. Why would we want to have a trailer attached to a house? What would the benefit of that be? Well, number one, a trailer has a title, just like land has a title, and therefore shows ownership of the dwelling that's built on top of it. So, that's important, because, I've presented a scenario to you. If you were going to build one of these on someone's land, and you've got a five-year land lease, or whatever it is, you build your structure, and then, through no fault of your own, the, the person who you've got your lease through falls into foreclosure, any improvements you make on that property, the bank's going to take from you. Now, having this structure with a title in your name gives you some recourse to protect your investment. And this is going to be costly. These aren't cheap. These cost more per square foot to build, because you're not distributing those costs over a larger area. So, the title is very important in that regard, to protect your investment, and that's not just your investment, that's your home. This has to be your primary residence. What's the other reason? Well, after five years, hopefully you've pinched your pennies and worked hard, and you've gotten to the point where you can buy your own house, possibly a piece of land, and when it comes time to move it, having that accessibility with the trailer makes it a lot more affordable to move. Right now, just to move one section of house, going down the road, going through all the road permits and all that, costs between $20,000 to $30,000. And that's just one section. That's not chopping the house up into multiple sections, that's just one. So, there, it saves money in terms of when it's time to move, and you can invest that into the new infrastructure you have to place when you've moved the house. So, these houses are built in accordance with every other regulatory board that we have here. So you have to go through the HDC. They have to weigh in, and it has to be aesthetically pleasing, and built with Nantucket in mind. It has to go through the building department, it has to go through planning, if necessary, zoning, and the health department. So, all these organizations are going to weigh in, and then they'll issue a building permit if things are designed correctly. After all that, once the structure's built, you'll get your final inspections. You'll go through the health department, you'll go through the building department, you'll go through the HDC. Every single one of the organizations has to sign off on it for this structure to actually be able to get your CO, which is a certificate of occupancy, which allows you to live in it. So, everybody's been speaking about what we can do to try and change the housing situation here. We've been talking about this for years. This has been an ongoing issue here on Nantucket for decades. But we've gotten to the point where this is no longer just an issue, but this is a crisis. And there's a large demographic of people on this island that are at fear of having to leave, not because they're pursuing the American dream someplace else, but because they're being forced out of here simply because they can't find a place to live. And, so this is one of those opportunities which gives someone a chance to stay here, and work hard, continue contributing to this society and this community, and hopefully get to the point where they can do something more traditional, and once their family grows, or they get to that point. But it's an opportunity. It's, it's giving them another tool to add to their toolbox. So, I would hope that you would vote in favor of this, and help Nantucket's community stay here, because in terms of Nantucket, we've always been a patchwork quilt. And to keep this fabric together, this, the people here need a place to live, and they need to feel like they're part of this community. And it's my personal opinion that a tiny occupied house is bigger than a large unoccupied one. Thank you.
Thank you. So on the motion. Ms. Rektor.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate it, and thanks for staying tight with zoning with us. That, that really does mean a lot. I appreciate some of the support in the audience today. I have to give Mr. Stover a lot of credit, because he brought something forward before the planning board that we had not even remotely thought about. And that was when he brought up the tiny house issue. And you can see that we glommed onto that, and it became a tertiary dwelling. You'll even see today, we're taking it a step further, where we're increasing the size of it, and trying to remove the restriction on the number that you can have per year. These are all great things, and my God, what a fantastic tool to put into the box. Something we had not thought about, and I, I give you so much credit for that. It's a great thing. But this one, I'm a little bit troubled by. And there's two words in here that trouble me tremendously, and it is the words movable trailer. There's the key, because I am convinced that this begins to open a door that Nantucket is not ready to cross. The moment you take this structure and, and put it onto a foundation, it is still a pri, it's still a structure. No matter how you slice and dice it, the trailer does not change any of the dynamics behind it. It will still have to be considered a structure, whether it's primary, secondary, or tertiary in the process. You can think about putting different covenants in place, certain restrictions in the property, which may afford it some protection should foreclosure happen. But the fact it's on a trailer causes, doesn't, it, it, it makes it a whole different ball of wax. Let me just read something to you, real quickly. A small house is considered no different in the eyes of zoning than a prefabricated traditional home that just happens to be small. And if the structure doesn't meet certain size requirements for primary residences, it may be used to qualify as an accessory. Structures that, that have wheels are most likely to be classified as a manufactured or mobile home, and need to meet U.S. Housing and Urban Development manufactured housing standards. In this case, local zoning would likely restrict them to designated mobile home parks, which exist in part to protect the character of traditional residential neighborhoods. My concern is really simple. You're entering new words into the planning lexicon. Mobile trailer. Today, this may be fine, but I'm afraid it begins to open the door toward that potential, which I, as one person on the board, do not want to have to deal with. I would ask you to please respectfully vote down this article. Let's continue working with the tertiaries, and my God, they're a wonderful solution that we've looked at for affordable housing. Thank you, and if you have more questions, please feel free to ask me.
Thank you. I heard a voice, but I don't know who it belonged to. Oh, oh, Mr. Saperstein, yes, please.
Madam Moderator, I'm Lee Saperstein. And as part of my background, I worked for universities, Pennsylvania, Kentucky, Missouri, and inexpensive housing in all of those towns tended to be mobile homes. So, I would speak against this based on an awareness of aesthetics, maintenance, and unfortunately, vulnerability to storms. But that's not my question or issue. It was my understanding, and I'm posing this as a question to you to turn to whomever is considered expert, that a mobile home is personal or chattel property, not, because it's not affixed to the ground, not real estate. And if that's the case, it's financed differently, it's treated differently in all kinds of codes, and unfortunately, for the people who buy them, they tend to depreciate. But that's really a question, could somebody speak to the issue of chattel versus real
Mr. Giorgio, do you, do you want to? I guess the place where you run into the issue, right, is where it's attached to a foundation pursuant to a building permit, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would say that if the tiny home is attached to a foundation and requires a building permit, it would not be considered chattel. And as I read the proposal, the proposed zoning amendment, it would be attached to a foundation. So, I, I would think it would be real property rather than chattel, under this definition.
Thank you. Ms. Fee.
Thanks. No, I, I came to this meeting, and I, I didn't think, what's the point of it? We don't really need this. I'd follow the motion. But a light bulb went off. When he said, when Isaiah said, these things have wheels, and we can move them easily, I've moved a house, and it was $30,000, $35,000, I think it makes a lot of sense. I think we should try it. I might be a little predisposed to this. My parents owned a building on C Street, and one of those is an Indian trailer, and it's still there to this day. So downtown Nantucket, there's a trailer, you can't even tell it's there, it's right up against the yacht club and the tennis courts, and you can't even really tell it's a trailer. So I wouldn't be scared about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Nancy Wheatley. I, I'd like to thank the, the planning board for working on the tertiary dwelling proposal, because I think it has been successful, and I think the changes they've made this year are going to help. And the, these tiny houses are intriguing, and they're sort of neat when you see them traveling around in wide open spaces, because you can move from one side of your lot to your, to the, to the other. But I do have a question for Mr. Giorgio, and I'm not sure that he can answer it, because I'm not sure it's easily answered. If you take your, your tiny house on wheels, and you affix it to a, to a foundation, how does, how, how does it get back on the wheels? I mean, isn't there a contradiction between both having wheels and being on a foundation? Or perhaps that should be to Mr., to Mr. Stover?
I, I was having the same problem myself.
There we go, Madam Moderator. I can only go by the words in, in the proposed bylaw. I don't think it talks about wheels, it talks about a foundation.
It says constructed on a mobile trailer to be attached to a foundation pursuant to a building permit.
Does that mean it has wheels?
I don't know.
I mean, I would assume you take the wheels off when you attach it to a foundation, and you store the wheels in your tiny house basement. I don't know. But the point is, the, the point is that any building can be moved. It may require a building permit to sever the tiny house trailer without wheels from the foundation, and to move it. But, you know, I'm, I, I assume it would take a building permit to do, to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Stover, do you want to add to that?
Thank you, my Madam Moderator. Yes, while it's on the foundation, it's not going anywhere. Wind loads, uplift, it's built in accordance with every other building we have here, and it's going to meet all the codes we have here. Now, what the trailer does, it is attached to the foundation, but getting back to the ownership, there is a title to it. When it's sitting on the foundation, most likely the axles aren't going to be on, they're going to be dropped, and it's on, just going to be on steel. And we build houses on steel all the time. As a matter of fact, we've been moving houses out here for 400 years. When you're 30 miles out to sea, you have to be pretty creative about how you use your buildings, and finding uses for them, when you can repurpose them. And that's what this plays into. We've been doing this already, we do it all the time, we've all seen houses move down the road. This just gives the person who's owned, owns the house, a little protection, and it comes back to their investment. But when it's on the foundation, it's just steel. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, in the center here? Oh, wait, that's all right. When you're done, Mr. Lofton, hand it, hand it back.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just a quick question. The way this motion is written, can, could the tiny house unit be a fourth dwelling?
No, apparently not. It's in place of the tertiary, apparently. Correct? Yes. Ms. Kepanash?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Patty Kepanash, Eagles Wingway. I had a question to the zoning board and the planning board. I think tiny houses are pretty cool, but I'm a little concerned about how many would be allowed on a single lot, and of what size, and in what areas. Thank you.
Could you scroll down, Mary? Okay. Keep going. Ah, right there. So you could have two, could you not, Ms. No, you could have it in place of your secondary, and you could play, have it in place of your tertiary? So you could have a primary dwelling, a tiny house, and a tiny house? Or could you have three tiny houses all in place of a primary, secondary, and tertiary?
Madam Moderator, it, it, the tiny house as proposed, and again, this is a citizen petition, this is a citizen alternate motion, the planning board's motion was to take no action on this article, but as it is written, it could be the primary, it could be the secondary, it could be the tertiary. It is not a fourth dwelling unit on a lot. And depending on, you know, the combination that you pick, we do have some size limitations that are in the bylaw, but that's getting a little complicated. I think the short answer is, it could be the primary, secondary, or tertiary, and it does not add additional density.
Correct. So you could have three, you can currently have three dwellings on a lot, a primary, a secondary, and a tertiary. And if, scroll back. Okay, scroll, scroll down a little bit. I don't know. Yeah, okay, yeah.
Madam Moderator, if I could add...
Yeah, go ahead, add the areas where they can go.
So the areas where these are allowed are the R5 district, R10 district, R20 district, R40... R40 district, and LUG 1, 2, and 3. So those are all residential districts, and those are consistent with the tertiary dwelling allowances that are currently in the zoning bylaw.
So not in ROH and not in R1. It starts in R5.
Right, and not in the commercial districts.
And not in the commercial districts. So if you have, currently you can have a primary, a secondary, and a tertiary in these districts. With this tiny house proposal, any one or all of those could become tiny houses. So you could have a lot that had three tiny houses on it, but it would have nothing else in terms of houses on it. Okay. Who haven't I heard from? Oh, the man in the front of the back, or is that a woman? Sorry, can't tell. Oh, Ms. Longacre, sorry.
If you scroll to the top of the proposal there, the second sentence, I think, says only one tiny house unit shall be allowed per lot?
Oh, okay. There you go. All right, so just one of the three. Yes.
Hi, my name is Angela Grove. I'm just trying to distinguish the difference between the tiny house and other dwellings that are allowed, a primary, secondary, tertiary. And as far as I understand, so just maybe I could get clarification, that the difference would be, so for example, if my husband and I owned a tiny house, we could own the house even when we might not own the land, and so therefore be renting the land but own the house. Whereas in all the other dwellings that are currently allowed, we would not be able to own the house if we didn't own the land? Is that correct?
Well, it gets really complicated when you start talking about that because it's possible to sever a building from its real estate and own it separately. It doesn't happen very often, but it is possible to do that.
I guess I'm just wondering what the, I'm a huge fan of tiny houses in general, but I'm wondering what this would really add to our laws and allowances if it's no different than other dwellings already allowed?
Okay. I believe that what it allows is a building that you can put on wheels and move around from lot to lot.
But if it's not a foundation, it can't move any different things than the other dwellings?
I think the way they're constructed, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Stover, but the way they're constructed makes them easily severable from the foundation and then moved around. Okay, so it's how they're connected to the foundation is different than how a primary or secondary or tertiary dwelling would be connected. Mr. Sanders?
Grant Sanders. I just want to say that I actually lived in that Indian Head trailer that Matt Fee was talking about. I've lived in every house on this island, okay? Just so you know. I think this is a fantastic idea. It's creative, it meets the needs of a lot of people, it is, it's regulated like crazy, so, so the chance of abuses are low, and I think it's something we ought to try. Let me give you an example of a way in which this situation would really help somebody on our island. My wife is a kindergarten teacher at the Lighthouse School, and they hire teachers every now and then, and they have a heck of a time trying to find a place for those teachers to stay that they can afford. Because as you can imagine, a small private school doesn't necessarily pay their teachers a ton of money. It's certainly not the same amount of money that public school teachers pay, and they, you know, we complain that those people aren't paid enough either. But imagine a situation where a Lighthouse School teacher could come here, teach kids, move to a tiny house, own the tiny house, maybe, maybe the school or a benefactor of the school buys the tiny house, and, and it's a rent-to-own kind of situation, and then that teacher has a path to homeownership. They buy a lot, they move the tiny house to the lot, and suddenly they're a member of the community on a long-term basis. It's a great solution, it's creative, I think we ought to try it. And if it doesn't work, we can strike this language later at another town meeting. So I suggest that we, we give this a shot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Keyes?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is something I actually know something about, which isn't always the case when I speak. I was in fact looking at Lloyd Kahn's blog on tiny houses when the topic came up. This is an incredibly complicated topic. Many of the people who would have to make informed decisions about this don't understand it. There are many places where this works extremely well. There are other places where it works worse than living in the harbor over the winter. I know we hate tabling things, but it would be, the original proposer and everyone else would be served better if we could send this back for further study and illustration and come back in a year. You can move a house without having wheels. You can put it, you can make it no wider than a flatbed and put it up. There's all kinds of things. In Barbados, many houses are chattel houses that move whenever the owner gets ready or the landlord gets shirted. So I think it's well worth, I share the enthusiasm, but I still remember the 1970s. I have a fairly clear memory, which many people don't. This was the hottest thing in the world in Northern California, and there you go.
Mr. Tafe? It's Madam Moderator, by the way, just so you know.
Don't fear the tiny house. There are tiny houses on Nantucket already that probably none of you know about because they really don't affect your lives at all. A tiny house is a great solution for someone that cannot afford to buy a piece of property. And there are a lot of young people on Nantucket, we've heard earlier, that can't afford property on Nantucket. This is something that is movable. If someone sells their land and you have to move it, you just have to find another place to put it. And the way it's worded, it says attached to a foundation. Is there a law that you have to attach this to a foundation? I'm sure the HDC would want to not see it looking as a trailer, but I'm sure there are other ways to camouflage wheels beside a tiny home. And if everyone's looked at the handout, at the top of the handout, there's a picture of a tiny house. It's shingled, with cedar shingles, it has asphalt roof shingles, it has windows just like most other people's homes. It looks like a tiny cottage. Why fear this? It's a great solution to the housing problem.
Yep, the woman over here by Mr. Franzudo?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Emily Seawall, and I'm in favor of passing Article 52. I just want to point out a couple of concerns that people are having. So as was just pointed out, Nantucketers have been living in tiny houses for a long time. We have Monmoy Village, we have the cottages over on Anna Drive, or actually Surfside. We have these cottages all over the place. So to address some of these fears, you can take it off the wheels, you can secure it, it's not going to blow away. You can put lattice work around the bottom, you can put a deck over the tongue of the trailer, you can hide all these things, excuse me, that make it look like a trailer park. These are just small cottages that will give people an opportunity to buy something, have a sense of community, a sense of ownership in Nantucket, where we're all very privileged to live right now. But let's, let's keep us here. We're all hardworking, we're all middle class. And one of the other arguments against it is how would you put a family in a tiny house? And as was addressed before, you know, we have teachers, we have single people, we have couples, we have people not having kids anymore. So let's just address this whole demographic and realize that we need a place to put these people. We're not going to be roommates at 50 years old. We just want to have a tiny piece in Nantucket. If we don't own the land, that's okay. We're just looking for a more stable future here. We all just want to be a part of the community.
Thank you. Ms. Now, did you have some information?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, again, Leslie Snell for the planning board. You know, I'd like to echo what Chairman Rector said earlier. You know, I applaud Mr. Stover's efforts on this article. This is the second year that he brought this concept forward. It's been a work in progress, right up until, I think, late yesterday afternoon. And there are some, some things to consider about this article. I mean, first of all, there's nothing in this article that would be allowed that's not allowed now. I saw input from the building commissioner about the trailering concept and attaching it to a foundation. And the opinion that I got was once it is attached to a foundation, it's no longer a trailer, it is a structure, and it does have to be constructed in accordance with the building code. The underlying trailer simply makes it easier for future transport. So there's nothing that would prevent you from doing that right now with our existing regulations. It's a perfect fit for the tertiary dwelling bylaw. As far as the ownership, the ownership of this unit could be addressed through other ways. Again, there's nothing in this proposal that is new or that wouldn't be allowed now. So I would ask you to support the planning board's motion to not add an unnecessary amendment to the zoning bylaw and to defeat this article. Thank you.
Mr. Stover elder?
John Stover, Madam Moderator. I am related to this fellow. He is my son, just in full disclosure. I think for me, in looking at the tiny houses, it's a huge factor first, that you don't have to buy the real estate. What you can do is lease that land so that you can put a piece of, you can put the tiny house on it. Or if you have a parent who's willing to share some land, you could move your tiny house onto that piece of land, and at some time move it off the land when you've had a chance to save your money and buy the more conventional home. I also see the tiny as an opportunity to own something as opposed to renting something. If I take my property and I build a tertiary piece of property, that's, I mean, a tertiary house, that's mine. I can't really sell just that house to one of my children. And they certainly can't relocate it later on. At least it's not easy to relocate it down on Liberty Street. But the tiny house can be rolled. It could be put back on the wheels and moved wherever it needs to go. And in the meantime, my child, maybe Isaiah or Dorothy, or a long list of them, would actually own the piece of the house. And they'd have their own roof as opposed to being, say, living in my house and getting a room and sharing kitchen facilities and the rest of it. I'm sure that any one of my children who is living with me would much rather have a tiny house and a roof over their own head that they own and sometime could sell when they're ready.
Mr. Johnson, is it?
Hi, Bert Johnson, 28 Longwood Drive. The one thing that concerns me here is the words movable trailer. We've already passed a tertiary dwelling, and these tiny homes seem to be nothing more than tertiary dwellings with wheels under them. And having been involved with housing in Nantucket and having buildings moved and moved some myself, it's probably a lot cheaper to just put two steel beams underneath this house and have Barrett or Toscan or someone come along, put their wheels under it and tow it away for you to the next location than it is to have it on an actual trailer. Because on a trailer, I remember years ago, there was a case where one of the towns here, it happened a lot of places around the country when the interstate highway system went through, with billboards. People would go on someone's land and put up their billboard, and the towns would say, well, we don't allow billboards in this town. So what the people did is they went and bought box trailers. And they put this sign on the side of a box trailer. You still see some of them along the interstates now. And I think it went all the way to the Supreme Court, and it said the towns had no jurisdiction over it because now it was a motor vehicle and it was regulated by the registry of motor vehicles in the town. So that's one thing I see with the, the problem with the words trailer, is that the HDC in the town may not have jurisdiction to say what it looks like or anything. So I think that we should go along with the recommendation that this be, be put down again and brought up again next year when it's more fully developed.
Is the man way up in the back, against the wall? If you could stand up, they'll get you a microphone.
My name's Frank Daly. Full disclosure, Isaiah Stover and I work together. And in the past years, just this past year alone, I've had four employees be lucky and buy land for themselves and for their families, three of which moved off island in order to do so. What we're talking about here is in order to fulfill the dream that so many people that come to this town meeting talk about and reminisce about, oh, when they came to Nantucket, this is how they started, or how the bad lands was $30,000. What we're talking about is an opportunity for people to come here to get their foot in the door. They can build these tiny houses, they can lease the land, they can rent the land, or they can actually buy the land and have affordable housing to start. This is their first entry into Nantucket ownership. All the dreams, all the things that people are saying about, let's keep it the way it was when I remember it in the 70s, we're talking about that same feeling, but right now. Give us an opportunity, give my employees an opportunity to get their foot in the door, to become part of the Nantucket community, the fabric that is so essential. The reason why people come here and build these million-dollar homes is because we're authentic. They love the character here. And this is the first time we have an opportunity to maintain this character, to give people an opportunity to stop watching all these people leave the islands. And I can't stress enough, we can't table this, we can't push it off. It's incumbent upon us to, to act now. So I implore everybody in here to please say yes.
Thank you. Yes, the man here in the orange or red, yeah, right there. Stand up and get a, get a microphone.
Hi, Jimon Danny. I think we should table this. I think just this discussion on classifying the building, whether it's part of the foundation or not, is something that I don't know if the planning board can get around. If you take it on the streets, it's titled as a motor vehicle of some type, a trailer. If you put it on a house, I mean, on a foundation, it's part of the building, it's part of the land. I don't think you can go back and forth and title it to get it on the street. Your only alternative, really, once you put it on the foundation, is to then have Toscan or someone move it, just like we do now. And I think we address the housing issue with the tertiary dwellings, the second dwellings. And while this is a good idea, I think it needs to be discussed a lot more before we adopt this.
Ms. Seeley? Someone could run her a microphone?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Renee Seeley, Director of the Housing Authority, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the Housing Authority. This matter has never come before, it's for discussion. I welcome it, though, because it's a great idea, I love it. Anything that promotes independent living for our citizens that's affordable is a great thing. I have a question, though. What happens if the person who owns the tiny house and is leasing a section of land and has a falling out with that owner? Where do they go with their tiny house? Is there going to be an abandoned tiny house place to go? Is there a tiny house limbo? And I'm not trying to be funny, because I think this is like a very important idea and a great idea. But I do have that question. What happens when you have a falling out with a landowner and you've got nowhere to go with your house?
Ah, Mr. Gorden?
I can, I can answer that question. Because it's on a trailer, you put it, you leave the property, and you drive right off the boat, and you leave the island. What this article does is it helps people stay here on the island. I'm not asking anybody to divide up land, shave off a little lot. We're asking for the ability to slide into this niche. And you know what's really cool? People always talk about leadership on Nantucket and how we're so cool at doing all these things. Isaiah talked about this last year. He wanted to push it through, he said, no, I'm going to wait. Now's the time to get this passed. Let's do this, let's show leadership in this country. I've been all around Massachusetts, I've talked to people about affordable housing. It's not just a Nantucket issue, it's across the state. This state has more awesome young people coming into it than any state in America. We've got great universities. And you know what? All these young people leave because there's no housing. Let's do this.
Mr. Ray?
I don't work for anybody anymore. But when I did, two and a half to three years ago, this was an issue for my department, the Health Department. We looked into it. I have been I have been in these units on the mainland, I have seen how they're set up. It's a wonderful situation. There is a building code that will address the structural integrity of that building. There is a human habitation code that will limit and define the number of people that can stay in that building. There's a septic system code here that will mandate that this be hooked to either sewer or a septic system, or something that will facilitate the sewage for the structure. This is a wonderful idea. I'm all of a sudden finding that I'm agreeing with Matt, and the ceilings are still here. This is something that I think we can't afford not to try. We have been talking about this for three years. We talked, we postponed it last year. We're talking about postponing it this year. Let's take the plunge. Let's put our feet into this and see if we can make these things work. What we need here is housing. This provides it. Thank you.
There's a woman right behind you. If you could hand her the microphone.
Hi, I'm Justine Paradise. I did some writing on this topic, actually, tiny houses on Nantucket, which already exist. And I think it's a great idea. I think there's a huge difference between a tiny house and an RV or trailer. And the fact that the, you have to go through all these boards sort of proves that. I spoke with Richard Ray doing this reporting, he just spoke for himself. But what I found was that at the Health Department, they didn't know how to deal at that time last year. They didn't know how to deal with it, they didn't know if it was allowed. He said if he found out about them, he would have to, he would have to report it, it would be a violation. I think this makes it clear that it is not a violation, so people don't have to live in fear, they don't have to live in the woods and hide their tiny house, which is what people are doing now. I think it's a great idea, they're really creative, it shows vision. So, thanks.
Thank you. The gentleman up in the first row of the back section?
Hi, I'm Alden Lenhart. And just one question. Are tiny houses on wheels illegal at this point on Nantucket? Is that a thing? Are they illegal?
He's asking, are they legal or illegal at this time on Nantucket? And I guess I would say there's no provision in the zoning by law that allows for them right now. Yeah, go ahead. I know. Hold on. Is that, that's true, correct? There's no provision in the by law that allows for a tiny house at the moment on wheels? I know what changes it. He's asking about the by law right now. Not allowed. That's not allowed right now. That's verified. This would allow it. Okay, over here, there's a woman who's had her hand up for a while.
Hi, my name is Ada Ruth Waig, and disclosure, I am related to Mr. Stover. I do want to say two things. The first is there have been questions about the foundation. You don't necessarily have to have a basement in order to have a foundation, you can have a slab foundation, which is significantly less expensive than doing a full basement. So you do have the foundation, but it's not necessarily the huge expense, or the disposal cost and everything else when you actually do move the structure. The second thing I think that I'd like to bring up is that we had someone bring a personal article because they had an issue with the building permit when they moved their structure. So now we have the place to, this puts it into place where you can actually move your structure or have your, your small dwelling so that you can move it. And it's not a question of whether it's available to you or not. Because even though the planning board says maybe it's allowed right now, it's not in there, so it's, it's too difficult to discern whether it's allowed or not.
Okay. Yes? Ara Charter? Go ahead, stand up, get a microphone.
There seems to be some concern about whether or not this has ever happened before in Nantucket. And out in Wisconsin, I remember the Underhill cottages, I think that's what they were called. And he would bring you a cottage if you were having someone stay at your house, and he would have a horse and a couple of trees and some buddies, and they'd just bring the cottage over to you. They'd take the wheels or trees out, drop the cottage down, and then when your guests left, he'd take the cottage away and bring to someone else. So this is not a new concept in Nantucket. If everyone is having a problem with the term wheels, perhaps it could be adjusted or modified to where the wheels come off and it's on a slab. And the question that I had, though, is the 5,000 square feet, is that a footprint? Is that total ground coverage? And then I've heard slab in the, what I read, and then the, the town council and the lady over here on the far right said basement, and I'm not sure what's going on.
Yes, Ms. McClure?
Fay McClure, 97 Homack Pond Road. My question is, I think it's a great idea, but my concern is, when they move it, what's happening to the foundation? Who takes care of the foundation? Where does the foundation go? Secondly, are we going to see this coming over on the boat in the summer and parked in somebody's yard, and then somebody leaves and goes away for the winter? Is this going to become a summer house? Any guidelines on this, whether it's a permanent house for an island person who's here year round? I just, I think it's a great idea, but I think we need to put some guidelines into it before we vote on it in a positive manner.
Thank you. Can you, can anyone from the town describe what the permitting process would be in terms of HDC and building? Ms. Snell?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So just like the tertiary dwelling, it would require review by the planning board. If it's on a lot with a primary or secondary dwelling, it would require review by the Historic District Commission, and it would require a building permit. So it would go through all of the same review that a typical dwelling goes through.
And then what would happen when it was moved? Would it have to go back through that same process?
Yes, because it's permitted as a permanent structure, once it's put on a foundation, then it would have to get the move-on, move-off permit from the HDC or a demo, a move-on, move-off permit from the Building Department or a demo.
Okay, so can you explain, because I'm confused, how does this differ from a tertiary dwelling?
It is our position, it's the planning board's position, that this fits entirely within the tertiary dwelling allowances and that it is not different from a tertiary dwelling.
Okay, great. Is there someone I haven't heard from? Yes, the woman next to Mr. Stover. Go ahead, stand up and get a microphone. Yeah, I have a lot of hands up, so I'm sorry if it's frustrating. I'm trying to get to as many new voices as I possibly can.
Hi, I also keep this short. My name is Kathleen Fitzpatrick. I currently reside at 49 Tom Nevers. That will change in two months. As it has changed since I've lived here, every six months, we have moved. I am a contributing member to this society and this community. I also have a child. And something like this, I would implore to appeal to your heartstrings, because we've covered a lot of solid logistics and practicality. And the heartstrings of something like this would provide somebody like myself and many other individuals who are in perhaps a transitional living situation that will hopefully not be forever this way, but the opportunity for stability and security. And what I mean by that is, if I were to be an occupier of a tiny house with my tiny family unit, that would be a familiar surrounding that we could have security in, that we could continue to live in. The renting for three months and six months and nine months, and then again for three months, and then again for six months, where your actual living environment changes constantly, it's exhausting and it's, it wears you down. So if your living house situation could remain the same, but you were just relocating if need be, that would be a better solution. I think you'd have an overall great contributing, you'd have a lot of contributing members to society who felt proud and had that sense of security.
Thank you. Mr. DeCosta?
Madam Moderator, I'm going to ask you to move the question, but before I do, I just want to make one comment.
Wait, you don't get to make a comment if you're moving the question.
All right, move the question.
Okay, Mr. DeCosta has moved the question. That will, a yes vote will end debate, a no vote will continue debate on Article 52. All those in favor of moving the question on Article 52 as moved by Mr. Stover, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
I declare that that is a two-thirds majority vote. So now we go directly to a motion on Article 52. This requires a two-thirds vote because it's a zoning article. A yes vote will adopt Mr. Stover's motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
I think it made a two-thirds. I would say it passed by a declared two-thirds vote. So Article 54, secondary lots, appears on page, well, I'm not really sure, 97, continues on to 98, 99. The planning board motion starts at the bottom of page 99, continues all the way on to page 101 and 102, with a supporting comment from the Finance Committee. I'm going to ask for your unanimous consent to waive the reading of that motion. And I would recognize Mr. Rector for the purpose of making the planning board's motion as printed in the warrant. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Ms. Timmerman, you called this, so I'm going to go to you.
Deborah Timmerman. I really called this just for clarification on a couple of things. Would these secondary lots then be allowed tertiary, second dwellings? It says only one lot would have a tertiary dwelling, but would the second lot be allowed a secondary dwelling?
Ms. Snell?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Leslie Snell again for the planning board. So the original lot is allowed to have three dwelling units, a primary, a secondary, and a tertiary. When the lots divided to create the secondary affordable lot, there's still only a total of three dwelling units allowed.
On both lots combined?
On both lots combined. So it doesn't increase the density that would otherwise be allowed.
So is this sort of like the old co-opt properties that were in the 80s? Sort of?
Madam Moderator, through you. No, this is a lot division. It's fee simple ownership. This is an existing by law provision, secondary lots. The change here is to allow a tertiary dwelling on one of the two lots, because that's not currently allowed.
Would the second lot created get separate taxes and all of that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, let me just make sure I don't have it. And, and that would continue to share a single driveway access?
Correct.
All right, I'm for it then. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anything further on Article 54? Okay, this is a zoning article, so it does require a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt. The motion of the planning board is printed in the warrant. A no vote will defeat that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Okay, I declare that that is adopted by a two-thirds voice vote. Now, Article 59, the by law on abandoned vehicles. I understand that Mr. Ross has decided to withdraw his call. Is that correct? Okay, is there anyone who wants to step into Mr. Ross's shoes on Article 59? Seeing no one, then I will just ask Mr. Rector to make the motion on Article 59 as printed in the by law with the technical amendment that was read into the record at the beginning of the meeting. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. This is a zoning by law, so it does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That motion is adopted unanimously. Okay, Article 63, we're out of zoning, so that's a thrill. And although we love zoning, we do, and we know the planning board puts a lot of hard work into it, it's the two-third vote that drags one down. Article 63 appears on page 128 of the warrant. The motion of the Finance Committee is moved that Chapter 46, Town Property Conveyance of Section 46-4, Acquisition of Land for Town Offices, is hereby repealed. Recognize Mr. Kelly for the purpose of making that motion. Is there a second? That motion is made and seconded. Should I go directly to the person who called it, or does the town wish to make any sort of presentation on Article 63? Okay, so this was called by Mr. Pearlman? There you are.
I'd like to make an amendment to the Finance Committee motion and change the word repealed to ratified, please.
To ratified, okay. So you are moving to amend the motion to ratify rather than repeal Chapter 46. Is there a second?
No.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Now, on that amendment, Mr. Pearlman, do you wish to be heard?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Next month, I will be celebrating my 46th anniversary on Nantucket. I've spent a great part of that time in the downtown area. And as many of you know, the last five and a half years, I've had the pleasure of having an office downtown. I'm also fortunate enough to have a parking space with that office, but that's another issue. I hate to see downtown become quieter in the wintertime than it already is. I don't know what more to say than that. I know that there are a lot of people in the room who agree with me on that. I think there are ways to keep town offices, various town offices, in the downtown old historic district. A few perhaps should stay out of town. The Building Department, for instance, when every morning during the week, there are probably 30 or 40 or more tradesmen who need to, to see the Building Department, the plumbing, the electric, the building, the whatever. But as far as the other offices, I think they could all stay in town, there are places to put them. I'm the only office in a big building that could be renovated, and, and I know there are other spaces for town offices. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. So on that, on the amendment, Mr. DeCosta? No? Okay.
One quarter minute.
Yes, Mr. Kopko.
Do you want to get a committee's counsel whether this language is allowed?
Which language, the amendment?
Changing the amendment to ratify.
Yeah. I believe it's the same thing as defeating the motion, so it's, it's allowed, but if you, if you want to.
Can you explain the question?
The question is, is the language that Mr. Pearlman proposed appropriate or legal?
Madam, Madam Moderator, the, the legal effect of this amendment would be to defeat the Finance Committee motion, with the one exception that if the motion is to ratify the by law, I assume it would have to go to the Attorney General for approval. And I can anticipate receiving a phone call from the Attorney General asking me, what the heck did Nantucket just do? Can you please explain? So I would respectfully suggest that rather than amend the main motion, that the, that the town simply vote the Finance Committee proposal, and if it's to defeat the Finance Committee's motion, then the by law does not change, and it does not have to go back to the Attorney General for approval.
Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Pearlman, that we just voted up or down and that you would be urging people to vote against the Finance Committee motion?
That's fine with me, Madam Moderator.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Kopko?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you, Jimmy, for offering.
Thank you, Jimmy, for offering that solution. It was pretty thoughtful. We may wonder why somebody thought that this law needed to be ratified. I'll tell you why it needed to be ratified. Because it was passed in 1997. And since 1997, the town and the administration has been of two minds about whether it's actually a law or not. And they have, from time to time, moved town offices out of town without the benefit of getting a vote of town meeting. Madam Moderator, can I get Alan Mary to highlight that last piece of the bylaw? So we can take a look at the language.
Yeah. No offices presently within the downtown core district shall be relocated to any site outside of the downtown core district without a vote of the town meeting?
That's the language. Yes, thank you.
If you could highlight that, Mary.
I think we can all look at that language, all of us, and have relatively little confusion about the letter and spirit of that law. It requires the administration to get a vote of town meeting to move town offices out of town. On most occasions, they have not done so, and presumably hoped that there was no teeth in the law, so what could be done about it? Or town council will find a way to explain our way around it? Or it's a temporary move, so it's excusable? However, when the police department moved out of town, as I recall, suddenly the law was the law. And the town did come to town meeting and ask, "Would you allow us to move the police department out of town?" The town voted yes, and we did. So the question before us right now is not necessarily, "Do we want the town offices to move out of town?" There's a mechanism to have that discussion already, which is the town puts together a proposal to do so and brings it to the town meeting and presents it to us in a reasonable and rational way, and then we decide whether or not that's something that we want to have happen. But by bringing this article forward, what they're asking is, "Will you please not make us bring this plan to you for your approval before we do it?" Well, in 1997, we said, "No. This is so important. You have to bring it to the highest authority in town government, this town meeting." So the great thing is, we don't have to have a long discussion about the incredible self-esteem that our town leaders have to come to us to start discussing a $20, $30 million new town hall when we have our island home, a firehouse, school, and, let me tell you, $100 million or more of sewers ahead of us. And we don't have to have a long and emotional discussion about how this is, in fact, the final nail in the coffin downtown after a lot of folks have spent a lot of time getting downtown designated a cultural district and investing in trying to keep the lights on downtown and keep downtown vital. And frankly, my own company has been part of that effort. So we don't have to have an emotional discussion about, "Is the town government ripping the guts out of downtown?" Because there's no plan before us. So all we have to do is simply vote this down, tell our town leaders, "If you want to move the government out of town, you have to come here with a proposal and ask town meetings permission."
Please wrap up.
It's simple and beautiful. Vote no.
Thank you. Okay. No clapping, please. Mr. DeCosta?
Any building that we build, no matter where it is, is going to have, we're going to have to come in front of this board or this body for the appropriation anyway. So let's just move on with it. Vote. Get it over with, Sarah. We will be back in the fall with an appropriation, either this fall or in the spring, for a new town facility. The present facility is much too small. In 1994, when this article was passed, the finance department had 10 employees and now is 21. The finance department rents three storage units out at Sun Trans to keep the paperwork in. Catherine will tell you she doesn't have enough storage space in that building for her paperwork. We have grown as a town. The departments have grown, and we haven't grown with the infrastructure for the departments. We're going to have to build a new facility somewhere, and we'll have to get approval from you. I don't want to have a big argument about where it's going to be when we get to that point. We'll talk about it then.
Mr. Madden?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and I appreciate the comments of the chairman. What I think is important that we do do, and I'm not going to embellish on what Mr. Kopko said or Mr. Pearlman said, because I agree with them wholeheartedly, but I think it's important that we send a very loud and clear message to the town that this is our wishes. We understand there may be new construction that needs to be done. We understand that there may be new buildings that need to be built. But I think this town, at least I'm hoping this town, doesn't want to imagine a town without a town building in the downtown.
Okay. No clapping, please.
I get all the needs that we talk about, about having a parking and having the cohesiveness of having offices put together so that they make sense. But I don't think we need to destroy our downtown fabric in doing so. I'm not really that bothered that some of the buildings, some of the offices have left, have been disappointed to a degree and frustrated, but I've seen where it's actually worked and made sense. And I think we can work with that. But I really hope that we, as a town, understand that this is New England. One of the things I loved about this place when I came to it was that it was actually a working community with a downtown area. I so much enjoyed going to the Sleckman's meeting in the town building. I still enjoy going to the town building, and I hope that we will send a message to the town that, please, let's keep the offices there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Richard Lofton, and I am speaking today as the clerk of the Nantucket Town Association. The Town Association is opposed to Article 63 because we are deeply concerned about maintaining the viability of Nantucket's historic downtown. It is unarguable that fewer people working downtown year-round means fewer people shopping downtown year-round, fewer people eating downtown year-round, and fewer people being downtown year-round. But here's what's especially important to know. It's been said by earlier speakers, but it's just, it's the key to the case. The bylaw now in place does not prohibit a town office from moving out of town. The existing bylaw simply requires that such a move be approved by a majority vote of town meeting. As it now stands, if we town meeting voters feel that a proposed move out of town makes sense, we will approve it, and that's the way it should be. Now, the proponents of Article 63 do not seem to recognize the threat to our downtown, and they think it's too much trouble to go to town meeting for approval. But of course, it is not too much trouble when it comes to decisions affecting the well-being of our downtown. I urge all of you as town meeting voters not to give up your right to weigh in when the town seeks to move out of town. On behalf of the Nantucket Town Association, I'm asking you to vote no on Article 63.
Thank you. Ms. Mooney?
Hi, Erica Mooney. I work downtown. I actually love being downtown. And I'd be happy to stay there, or I'd be happy to go anywhere because I'd go where I have to go. That being said, we have a hard time finding someplace to eat in the winter. A lot of places close down. There's not a lot of options all the time. Also, we have a very antiquated building. The bathrooms are insufficient. There's a lot of things wrong. It's got asbestos. So if you want us to stay downtown, I just hope that you plan on coming up with some money to improve the infrastructure, because you can't have people downtown in inadequate working spaces. We love it down there. We want to be down there, so let's put some money into the building.
Thank you. Ms. Holgate?
Oh, you're moving the question?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think we can just go to a vote, and let's just do that. So this requires a majority vote. A yes vote will adopt the Finance Committee motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. Just to be clear, Mr. Pearlman withdrew his amendment, so a yes vote would be a support of the Finance Committee motion as printed in the warrant. A no vote will defeat that motion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no.
No.
That motion is not adopted. Okay. Article 64. Article 64 is on page 128 of the warrant, continues to page 129. It had a motion not to adopt. It was called by the sponsor, Max Perkins, and he and town council have worked out an amendment, I mean, a motion for him to present, which would be, "Move to adopt Article 64 as a general bylaw of the town as printed in the warrant, provided that the town clerk, with the assistance of town council, is authorized to insert the text of the amendment into Section 137-18 of the Town Code with appropriate wording changes that are consistent with the purpose and intent of Article 64." Is that your motion, Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Great. If you could stand up and get a microphone, is there a second? That motion is made and seconded, and I will turn this over to you, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So first off, we strongly support the original intent of the bylaw. It serves the purpose to protect the boaters and swimmers of Nantucket Harbor in addition to protecting the delicate balance of the marine life. Our personal watercraft itself is rendered motionless when we are engaged in flyboarding. Additionally, we would only be operating in deep water outside of navigable channels to keep a safe distance from boat traffic. Our operation would be outside of marked speed zones, the no-wake buoys up harbor and outside the no-wake buoys by the jetties. So any noise we would be making would be drowned out by the much larger boats and faster boats cruising by. This amendment, I do not think, will set a precedent for future amendments or future businesses, because our case is unique solely to the sport of flyboarding and nothing else. Thank you.
Mr. Perkins, before you sit down, just because I think people may wonder, can you explain, because not everybody is going to know what flyboarding is and how you do it?
Sure. My brother would like to speak on this.
Okay. Perfect.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alex Perkins. I'm a graduate from Nantucket High School a few years ago. A few years ago. Thank you. So flyboarding is a new water sport that uses a stationary floating engine to pump water and propel users up into the air, and it gives them the sensation of flight. We started this business two summers ago and brought it to the island. It's a relatively new sport. So the safest, most efficient, and most reliable way to control our flyboard customers is to use the engine of a personal watercraft. Due to the unique nature of our specific application, our personal watercraft is not used in the conventional manner in which it was designed. We are seeking to reclassify our personal watercraft as a personal watercraft engaged in flyboard operations and permit only this specific use in Nantucket Harbor.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Moderator, I've observed this operation firsthand, so I'm going to try to shed a little more light on it for the people in the room who don't understand what it is. So when they're talking about a personal watercraft, it's a jet ski. And the hose attaches to the back of the jet ski where the exhaust would normally come out. And the thrust from the engine of the jet ski is what propels the board up off the ground. The jet ski is basically motionless. It's not bombing around the harbor at 45 miles an hour, which is what the original intent of this article was, to stop. It's not making a lot of noise. Right now, for the last several summers, the boys have operated this, they're a business on the outside of the East Jettie. So as you're going out the channel where the big pile of rocks is on the right-hand side with the green marker on it, they would be just outside of that. The problem with that is, is they have to tow the jet ski and the whole operation out there and back, and then while they're trying to do it, they're getting constantly wake by the high-speed ferries and all the other boats that are going back and forth. I, myself, speaking as someone who's on the water a lot, goes up and down that channel all the time, would have no problem with this operation being either up in First Bend or up in the corner on the other side on the West Jettie. But because of the way we have written our bylaw, which was to stop the wolf packs of jet skis from bombing up and down the harbors, their business cannot operate inside the jetties because their personal watercraft, aka the jet ski, is used to propel the board. So I would urge and strongly support this. These are two local boys. They grew up here. Their father and their mother, they own a family business here, and they're just, they're trying to, they come up with a niche here that does really well, and they do a good job with it, and they're very professional. So I would urge you to support this.
Great. Thank you. Yes.
Madam Moderator, thank you. I am Lee Saperstein. I was neutral on this article until I heard described where it was going to be parked. I came to Nantucket and was attracted to Nantucket Community Sailing. I've learned to sail, and I've discovered the number of people out on the water in the very areas that have been described as being appropriate for this machine. We sail in boats that don't have motors. We kind of like it without motors. So the area against Jetties Beach, where Nantucket Community Sailing has its boats and its lessons and its boards and so forth, or up harbor where the Yacht Club has its races. I don't think these two are compatible. And so I suggest that we keep it outside of the jetties where the other engined watercraft go. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
I guess I'll, oh, so in the Finance Committee, we have the privilege to listen to the citizen warrant articles, and it's a job we take very seriously because it's an opportunity for citizens to come before you to talk about what they'd like to accomplish. We had both Mr. Perkins and Chief Pittman come and speak to us, both very eloquently and passionately, and it was based on the testimony, if you will, of Chief Pittman, and I'll ask him to speak to it, that he had concerns with unintended consequences, some issues about noise, I believe, and I think he has a little more that he can shed light on the topic.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Pittman in a minute, but Chief Pittman in a minute. Mr. Franz Udo, you have someone? Or is it you personally?
No. Madam Moderator, Dave Franz Udo, former harbor master and the person that worked on what Mr. Saperstein is talking about, and that's competing uses. And we have more people every year competing for the use of the same water. And I think the key here is, the same thing that I said at town meeting when we passed the jet ski bylaw and relegated an area out for them in the core of the bay, it all comes down to safety. And I think that it, there's, it's like zoning. There's a place to do this, and the place to do it is out in the core of the bay that's already been designated. I understand about the transportation back and forth, and that was an argument that was made back then by a commercial entity that wanted to rent jet skis. So that's why we came up with an area for them to do this, and I think the town meeting needs to take a lesson from that and continue to allow it, but to allow it out in the core of the bay.
Thank you. Did you want to speak, Chief Pittman? Not really. Okay. Mr. Attley? If you could take that microphone right behind you. It's on.
Just a quick question. Has the Coast Guard been approached at all as to issues that might crop up that they have a problem with?
One of the, one of the Mr.'s Perkins? Either one of you may answer that.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Last year, the Coast Guard made it mandatory that operators of a business of flyboarding, the person sitting on the jet ski controlling the flight must not only hold a minimum operator of an uninspected passenger vessel captain's license, they must also hold a current flyboarding instructor certificate, both of which... instructor certificate, both of which Alex and I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Grant Sanders. I just want to speak in favor of this article. I've known Max and Alex since they were born, and you're not going to find two young men who are more respectful of the harbor or the water than them. They grew up on the water, they both are Coast Guard certified, and they have operated this business for two summers, and it hasn't had an impact on anyone. And I think the fact that they're so respectful of the island, the harbor, they grew up here, it, it, it's a business that is already regulated, and if there are complaints, then those complaints can be addressed, but I think that these two young men deserve a shot at making this business work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ray?
My concern here is water quality. There's been a lot of talk over the last few years about the high lines effect on Nantucket Harbor with its jet propulsion systems, and the Steamship Authority also with its jet propulsion systems. They move laterally towards the bottom. I suspect that in this particular activity, the water jets are projected straight down. Even if they come down at an angle, please think about the turbidity associated with this, and if it's done in our harbor, what impact it's going to have on the water quality of the harbor, even for a short period of time. And I guess my second comment is, whatever happened to passive recreation? Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Pittman?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I think, just to be fair, what my testimony was to the FinCom about this issue was, we had, when this was first brought to our attention, there is a place out in the quarter of the bay as was indicated where they can go, and they can take their jet skis from Children's Beach Boat Ramp, they can operate them out the channel there and then out the channel into that area. So it's not like they have to tow them out there. Our concern is, at the time and still is, about noise. Today's modern jet skis are fairly quiet. I personally own one at, not located here in the island, but at another place, and it is very quiet. But my sister owns one also that's older, and it's not quiet. And if, depends on who's doing it, you know, it's, we can't just pass the bylaw and say, these folks can do it. Anybody that owns this equipment can come here and do it once this bylaw is passed. And depending on the condition of their jet skis, their equipment, you're going to get noise. I know a couple of years ago, when I was down in Florida, at Fort Lauderdale, we're on the intercoastal, at a restaurant, enjoying ourselves as a family, and we're watching, with entertainment, one of these things going on. It was quite entertaining for about the first 10 minutes. Then it got real annoying from the constant buzz that was going on, and it went on for hours. So it's just not appropriate in our harbor, around the mooring fields where people are trying to recreate. There is a place already designated for this, and it can be used successfully and uninterrupted out there. I'm sympathetic, they are good operators, we've got no complaints about them, but I think in order to keep it so there's no complaints, they should just stay with the existing regulations that are in place.
Thank you. Okay, this requires a majority vote, seeing no further hands. A yes vote will adopt the motion as printed in, oh no, as shown on the screen and made by Mr. Perkins. A no vote will defeat that motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no.
No.
That motion is not adopted. Okay, so it is 25 of 5. I think it's pretty clear we're not going to make it in one night, but I think we could do at least one more before 5. What do you think? Yes, okay. Let's go all night, we have no life, right? I mean, whatever. Okay, Article 65. Appears on page, gosh, it's somewhere here. 129, continues onward. The motion starts on page 132 and finishes up on page 134. I'd ask for your consent to waive the reading, and I'd recognize Mr. Kelly for the purpose of making the Finance Committee's motion as printed in the warrant with the technical correction read into the record at the beginning of the meeting, which was to include the sentence in Section 140-5. A copy of any grievance shall be submitted to the above-named board and officer regardless of the entity to which it was originally submitted. Is that your motion?
So moved, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, is there a second? I'm sure I heard a second from down there somewhere, right? Motion made and seconded. This was called by Mr. DeCosta, so I will go right to you, Mr. DeCosta.
I just want some clarification on this article before we vote on it. The first is, I'd like to hear from the Health Department as to whether I got to worry about my neighbor putting a pig in next door, and if this article is going to allow him to do that by right and not by request. And the second is, I get concerned about anything that now adds another layer of, of a complaint process. What I mean by that is now, I guess you got to bring your complaints to, if this passes, to the Agricultural Commission, and then they would send it to the proper department in town. The Agricultural Commission presently has at least one vacancy on it, possibly two, and the last appointments that I made to it, it wasn't like we were getting our doors beat down with applications. So I could get concerned about anything that says we have to rely on a volunteer commission that isn't a full commission. So if I could hear from the Health Department on that issue.
Certainly. Mr. Santa Maria?
Okay, so it's Roberto Santa Maria, Health Department. It is our understanding that the right to farm, as far as the, your pig question goes, you would need, you would, this fits on commercial agriculture, this is geared to help commercial agriculture, and the current methodology, if I'm not mistaken, is you would need two acres and also be defined as a commercial agriculture by the state. So you would meet, you would have to meet specific zoning requirements, and you would have to meet specific sales requirements as well. So only the commercial farms would be protected by this bylaw. If a neighbor in town decides to order 13 pigs, five sheeps, and six roosters, we can enforce against that. That does not, they're not protected under this. And then for the second part of the article, which was, correct me if I'm wrong, or the complaints, for the second section of the article, this complaints against a commercial farm would be, in our opinion, in the Health Department's opinion, and the Board of Health did take this up on their meeting approximately two weeks ago, and they did agree with this as written. It adds that layer of mediation. Once the complaints get to the Board of Health, it's more on an enforcement end, and then it's, everyone's already at odds with each other, and what we say is the enforcement order, whole nine yards. We agree with the concept of this grievance mediation before it gets to the Board of Health in order to prevent hitting people with hammers. Not literally, obviously.
Thank you. So I'm going to go to you. Now, you're not a voter, correct? Okay, but you are affected potentially by this article?
Correct.
Okay. If you could identify yourself for the record.
I'm Tracy Patton, and, Mr. DeCosta, there is a mechanism in place, and it's from the state of Massachusetts. It's the guide to agricult, Mr. Costa? Oh, sorry. I was just going to show you. It's a guide to agricultural commissions, and there's a whole scale of here of scenarios in other towns, how they've handled things, and it's also building relationships with town boards and staff. So there is a vehicle in place for mediation through the agricultural commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Timmerman?
What about fertilizer use in small farms? Who would be regulating that?
Mr. Santa Maria, is that a Board of, still a Board of Health regulation, the fertilization? Yes. Thank you.
All the current regulations that are in place are still there. As long as people are following, as far as the fertilization, as long as they're following best practices, everything is still in place. If they're not following the best practices, then yes, it does fall on us to prove it. However, that is enforceable at that, at that point.
Great, thank you. Mr. Cohen? Go ahead, just get a microphone.
Sure.
You seem so surprised, and yet I think you had your hand up.
I did, yeah. I have a question. It seems like we regulate the use of land through zoning, and this is a bylaw, which would only require, I believe, a 50% vote instead of a 2/3 vote. I wonder if town council could explain the difference here.
Sure. Mr. Giorgio?
Madam Moderator, the right to farm bylaw is not, does not regulate land use, it's not a zoning article, so therefore it's going to be adopted as a general bylaw of the town, it's a simple majority vote, and it does not impede on the ability of the Board of Health, for example, to take enforcement action when their own regulations or other provisions of state law are being violated.
What, what does it do, in brief?
So in brief, it, it is, it does three things. Number one, it's a statement by the town more aspirational than anything, that farming is an important part of the culture and the economy of the town. That's number one. Number two, it provides a mechanism for notifying property owners, I believe on a yearly basis, if I'm not mistaken, that Nantucket is a right-to-farm community. And then lastly, it does provide a process for the existing agricultural commission to mediate disputes where, for example, neighbors may have a concern about a particular farming activity. It doesn't give the agricultural commission enforcement power, it, it just, they would, it gives them a role in terms of attempting to help mediate any neighbor-to-neighbor disputes that may arise.
Thank you. Mr. Saperstein?
Madam Moderator, essentially, I'm in favor of this, but I do, it's one of my own failings that when I hear something that I don't think is quite correct, I wave my hand. I'm Lee Saperstein, I'm former secretary of the Article 68 work group that wrote the regulations. I spent a lot of time on those regulations that are now Part 75 of our Department of Health regulations, and I'm fairly certain, unless I've lost my mind altogether, that commercial operations, two acres and $5,000 per year, were not covered by our regulations for fertilizer.
To my knowledge, the way, I haven't read it in a while, but to my knowledge, we can follow up on fertilizer in commercial agriculture as long as the BMP is not being followed correctly. We can, we can do that under the general health bylaw, the general health laws through the state, MGO 111.
So not specifically under Nantucket's fertilizer guidelines? It's under the state regulations?
It's a gray area in that we can use the local regulations to enforce the state law. This, the best management practices are established by reference in our regulation, so as a result, we can use the best management practices as our enforcement tool.
Okay. Okay, yep. Up there in the back? Yes?
Hi, Madam Moderator, Jim Albert, Starbuck Road. If this is limited to a two-acre lot, there's a lot of two-acre lots in town, I think a lot in the island. And one of the things that the disclosure notification requires is that the two-acre lot farm, farm notify the neighbors that this could cause noise, dust, and odors from ostriches and camels. So I don't know if we really want that in town. It's a nice thing to have, but I don't want ostriches and camels next to me. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Wheatley, and then I'll go to the back there.
Madam Moderator, thank you very much. I had a question about where, and I did, I did read all, I did read all of this, all of this warrant article, by the way. I did not see anywhere in here a restriction to commercial farming, so I wonder how that restriction comes about, or if it's, if there's some amendment needed to the bylaw to be sure it is only for commercial farming.
I, I think, although I don't know this bylaw particularly well, that in 140-2 definitions, the word "farm" is limited to parcels or contiguous parcels or water bodies used for the primary purpose of commercial agriculture, or accessory there too. I don't know if that's the place where that happens, but that is in there. Mr. Wallace?
Dylan Wallace, 19 Nobodyer Farm Road. The main purpose of this article is to help the lines of communication within the town agencies and to sort of help educate and mediate, as Roberto said. It does have to be a commercial farm, like we've been mentioning, and it also, one of the other requirements is that it has to be in business for two years. So for example, if somebody did decide to have a farm downtown on a two-acre parcel, they'd have two years that the neighbors would have time to bring grievances to the board or any of these other local agencies to be able to limit that use if they deemed it inappropriate.
Thank you. Mr. McGowan?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name's Martin McGowan. I own a farm on Nantucket. It's an organic farm. I'm a licensed applicator and worked on the board with BMP for making sure that Nantucket is healthy. I urge you to support this, because it's only saying, can you grow a vegetable in your backyard? It's not a big deal. It's a simple thing that says Nantucket likes farming and likes healthy food and healthy living. That's what this is for. I urge you to support this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Franzudo?
Thank you. Bruce Mandel-Maticat. I just have a quick question for, I guess for town council. How does this differ from the state right-to-farm law? What, what are we expanding? What are we taking away?
Madam, Madam Moderator, this bylaw is consistent with, with state law. As a matter of fact, the bylaw that's in front of you is the model bylaw. There are a few differences, but it's basically the model bylaw that is recommended by the Executive Office of Environment, Energy and Environmental Affairs. So it has been vetted at the state level. I will also say, I don't know exactly how many communities have adopted a right-to-farm farm bylaw, but it's a, it's a very large number. I don't have the exact number.
142.
I've been told it's 142. Other municipalities in Massachusetts have already adopted this right-to-farm bylaw.
Okay. Okay, so this requires a majority vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion of the Finance Committee as printed in the warrant with the technical correction. the technical correction that we read into the record at the beginning of the meeting. A no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That motion is adopted. Okay, Article 67. Oh, you want me to stop? It's 10 of 5. We can do one more. No? Oh, you people have no stamina whatsoever. Okay, so we'll start, unfortunately, with Article 67. I really think we should do 67, and then we should stop. What do you think? Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we're going to do Article 67, which starts and ends on page 136. It was moved not to adopt. Mr. Dawson has called it. He's brought a motion that we have on the screen. Move the Chapter 41, Board of Sewer Commissioners, Section 41-3A, Town Sewer District of the Code of the Town of Nantucket, be amended by adding property located at 17 Milestone Crossing, Assessor Map 68, Parcel 458, to the Town Sewer District. This motion will require 2/3rds vote because it was not originally recommended, and therefore, under the sewer rules, it requires a 2/3rds vote. Is that your motion, Mr. Dawson?
Moderator, yes, it is. I am not asking the town or taxpayers for any money. I'm not asking for any zoning changes. My leach field that I put in 20 years ago is feeling its age, as I am feeling mine, and every leach field has a lifespan, and mine is coming towards the end of its life. I went to the Finance Committee and asked some guidance, and they asked me if it has failed. It has not failed, but it's showing signs of age. So I'm trying to plan ahead. I would like to incur 100% of the cost, not asking for any money from anybody, to tap into the sewer so that it'll be, you know, good for the environment, good for the community. So I ask for your blessing. That's all.
Okay. Ms. Bozenowski?
Upon its -- you know, when it does fail, I just want to be able to not panic and say, "Oh, my God, you know, look at this mess." I want -- so upon failure, I'd like to be able to do that. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bozenowski?
I'm Kara Bozenowski, DPW Director. Andrew Vorse, Roberto, Santa Maria, and I ran through a checklist that we have for rating whether particular properties should be included in the sewer district, and this property did not succeed in rising to that level. The property is very large. There is room for replacement septic system, and the concern is that the treatment plant that you all spent $8.8 million on last year has a finite capacity, and we have $230,000 -- $230 million worth of sewer projects that we need to put into that facility. And this creates a precedent that we shouldn't be setting with the volume of projects that we have on the proposed at this point.
Okay. Yes. Dr. Mulcahy?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Matt Mulcahy, as a private citizen, not with the Finance Committee on this. I would ask you to support Mr. Dawson's motion. While I agree with everything Ms. Bozenowski said, we're talking about one parcel here. And after being involved with these sewer extensions and sewer needs areas for a number of years, I think in this case, there is enough capacity at the sewer plant to make an exception and allow this parcel to tie in, and as Mr. Dawson said, at his expense. See, I think we should be a little more flexible in these certain instances. Thank you.
Thomas Barrett, Tasha Millane. I'm not advocating to add this to the sewer district, but the question I have is, as these little pieces come upon us, when these systems do get added or are approved, would it be required for them to be able to add extensions to it, so future properties down the road or next door that has to be added would be able to tie in to theirs so that, therefore, that one line can be continuous? Or will it all be individual spaghetti lines that are going to try to support a neighborhood that could be expanded in the future?
This would be one lateral coming off the main that's in Hinsdale, so there wouldn't be any ability for a further extension.
Because he doesn't have to put a line in. He can just run a lateral straight to his property from Hinsdale, is that basically it?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Barrett, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I realize that it would come down Hinsdale. I realize that it would be one lateral, but would it be required support to be able to support the rest of the neighborhood? Since we're putting one in, and he's willing to put it in...
We're just putting a lateral, though, from Hinsdale onto his -- it's right there. The sewer's right there in the road in front of his property. There's nowhere for him to be coming.
Could the town request an easement to go to the street, so for future expansion? I'm just looking 15 years down the road, when everybody else, this way, if it's at the end of a dead end, they can get it to the dead end, and it'll tie back into the main system. We just have to look to the future, that's all.
Okay. Mr. Dawson?
I'm just looking to do what my -- if you see 2 lots over, my neighbor has done it in the darkened area, and I'm just trying to be respectful and plan in the future.
Over here?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And I just want to do exactly what they just did. They're in my neighborhood.
Thank you. Yes. Ms. Wheatley?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I want to support what Director Bozenowski said. I am very pro adding parcels to the sewer system when it's appropriate, but when you're outside the needs area, I think there needs to be a real need. And the whole purpose of the evaluation that the 3 directors go through is to determine whether or not there is a need. Because while our plant has significant capacity, and it can have significant capacity in the future if we're able to get an ocean outfall, which is another issue, it does -- it is finite capacity, and we shouldn't do these one-offs because they're not really fair to the other people who are in the neighborhood. And I think the, you know, the questions of, "Well, if he's going to do it on this corner, can I do it on that corner," et cetera, that's what happens when you don't use the evaluation that you've put together, which I think we have all agreed is fair. We need to be fair, and I would suggest that we vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, well, seeing -- oh, yes, Mr. McGowan?
I urge you all to vote yes for Mr. Dawson. Vote yes for sewer every single time. Sewer the island, $280 million coming your way. Don't be afraid. We're going to sewer the island. Mr. Dawson, I'd give it to you in a minute.
Thank you. Okay, so on that note, we will go to a vote on Mr. Dawson's motion on this Article 67. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. It does require a 2/3rds vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. Oh, what fun. We can end on a hand count. Block the doors. All those in favor, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised until the tellers have had an opportunity to count your vote. So when we come back on Monday, we'll start, I guess, with Article 70. I do have a motion to refer Article 70 to the Agricultural Committee Board of Health for further study.
Do you mind if I --
Yeah?
Can you just remind me that a vote for a yes is actually to --
No. A yes vote is to adopt Mr. Dawson's motion, which is to allow him into the district. So if you're voting yes, you're voting with Mr. Dawson to allow him into the district. If you're voting no, you're voting with the FinCom. 6 o'clock. Oh, yeah, don't forget, save your warrants because we have a limited number of them, and you will want to have it with you. We'll have 6 articles to do Monday. Well, you don't have to run credits till the next meeting, do you? All right, well, we're going to run a few credits, just so in case you're not here on Monday, you can see all the people it took to put this together, but you better be here Monday. Okay, so all those opposed, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised until the tellers have counted your vote. Boy, you guys were loud. Okay, I really appreciate your hanging in there till just after 5:00. It's just like a regular workday, 9 to 5:00. Now remember, don't leave till I've declared the vote, just in case something crazy happens. I do want to thank Town Council, John Giorgio, for his advice today. He won't be with us on Monday, so thank you, John. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you're not a voter, so I couldn't really let you talk. Oh, would you like to make a comment? What is it? What's your comment? Oh, thanks. Okay, on Article 67, here, you can make it from here. Yes, 183; no, 46; 2/3rds is 153. That article is adopted. And before we adjourn, Mr. Plansor wants to make a final comment.
I just want to thank all you guys so much for coming, and thank you so much to Sarah for being a good moderator, and we'll see you guys on Monday.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and see you Monday night.